Good morning and welcome to all attendees. My name is Christian Klosner and I am the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Special Enforcement, also known as OSE. I am joined today by hearing co-hosts, OSE Executive Deputy Director Francine Vlantis-O'Keefe and Special Assistant Corporation Counsel Ayesha Watson. OSE's mandate includes overseeing and coordinating response to conditions at properties that threaten the safety and vibrancy of the city's homes and communities, including in particular, addressing the conversion of the city's housing stock into illegal and dangerous short-term rentals. The use of residential properties is governed by a number of laws, including the New York City Building, Construction, and Housing Maintenance Codes, as well as the New York State Multiple Dwelling Law. These laws, taken together, require that units and residential properties, unless specifically classified for transient use, are to be used for occupancy by a family for thirty consecutive days or more. This rule applies to units, whether those units are in a one-family home, a two-family home, or a multiple dwelling with three or more units. The definition of "family" allows either a single person or a group of related individuals to occupy a dwelling unit and maintain a common household with not more than two boarders, roomers, or lodgers. Therefore, short-term rentals in these units are only allowed when a host is staying with no more than two guests and the guests have unobstructed access to all parts of the unit. Local Law 18 of 2022, also known as the Short-Term Rental Registration Law, was adopted January 9th, 2022. Local Law 18 established two new sections of law. The first section, codified in Sections 26-3101 through 26-3105 of the Administrative Code of the City of New York, established registration requirements for short-term residential rentals. The second section of Local Law 18, codified as Sections 26-3201 through 26-3203 of the Administrative Code, established requirements for booking services regarding registration verification. Local Law 18 further designated OSE as the administering agency. The first section of the law establishes a requirement for hosts of short-term rentals to obtain a registration. The law requires that registrations may only be issued where the applicant is a natural person who is the permanent occupant of the dwelling unit being registered, who certifies that they will follow the city and state laws relating to short-term rentals, as I've laid out above, and who has disclosed all existing listings. The law also requires an applicant to pay a fee and provide a description of what parts of the unit short-term renters will occupy. OSE is prohibited from granting the registration if the unit is in any of the following categories: if it is not a residential unit; if there are uncorrected violations for dangerous conditions; if the unit is rent-regulated or on a NYCHA property; if the unit is considered a rooming unit; or if the unit is in a building that is on the prohibited building list, which is a list of buildings where the owner has certified that no short-term rentals are permitted. The law requires registered hosts to display in the unit a registration certificate and diagram of the unit showing all exits, include the registration number in all advertisements for short-term rental, and to keep records of short-term rental transactions for seven years. The law also establishes criteria for revocation, a range of penalties for violations of Local Law 18, and obligates OSE to publicly report data about registrations, including the address and unit number of the unit. Turning now to the second section of the law. Local 18 requires booking services to utilize an electronic verification system created by OSE to verify if a listing offering a short-term rental is either exempt from registration or if the listing is associated with a valid registration and matches the name and address tied to the registration. Verified listings will receive a unique confirmation number, and booking services are required to provide monthly reports containing the listing number and the unique confirmation number for each short-term rental transaction. The law establishes penalties for booking services that process short-term rental transactions without verifying the registration status or that fail to provide the required reports. The proposed regulations that are the subject of today's hearing include the provisions of the law as described above, as well as establish additional rules that the local law requires OSE to implement. Specifically, Local Law 18 requires OSE to establish by rule the following: the form and manner of applying for a short-term rental registration or renewal, including how the applicant must describe which portion of their home will be used for short-term rental guests, and how they will certify they understand and agree to comply with the laws relating to short-term rentals; two, a fee for application; three, the length of time a registration is valid -- I'm sorry, the length of time a registration is valid for before expiring; and the process -- and four, the process by which building owners apply for inclusion or removal from the prohibited building list and certify that leases and other occupancy agreements prohibit short-term rentals. Finally, the proposed rules include a table of penalties that establishes fines for violations within the ranges included in Local Law 18, and in many cases, with lower penalties for first offenses and eligibility for curing a violation to avoid a fine. The authority of the Mayor's Office of Special Enforcement to promulgate these rules is found in Section 104.3 of the New York City Charter and Local Law 140 -- I'm sorry, and Local Law 18 of 2022. The text of Local Law 18 and the text of these proposed rules are available right now on the Registration Law tab of OSE's website, which can be reached most simply by entering in your browser window NYC.gov/OSE. Copies of the proposed rules are also available on the websites for the New York City Rules and the City Record. This public hearing is an opportunity for interested parties, whether regulated entities, stakeholders, or members of the public, to provide comments regarding the proposed rule before it is finalized. Speakers will have up to three minutes to make their remarks. This time limit will be enforced to ensure that everyone who wishes has had the opportunity. In general, I will call elected officials first, speakers who have signed up in advance second, and then those who have appeared today to speak but did not sign up in advance. If you did not sign up in advance, please use the raise hand feature to indicate your desire to speak. I will periodically announce the order of the next several speakers to be called, and I ask you to be prepared to unmute yourself when requested and when your name is called. If you are not present at the hearing when your name is called, you will be skipped temporarily, and we will periodically revisit those names that were skipped. I ask that each speaker start by stating your name for the record, and please let us know if you were appearing on behalf of an organization. For any who would prefer to remain anonymous, please provide as much information as you feel comfortable doing so. If you have prepared written comments today, please email a copy to oserules@cityhall.nyc.gov. The hearing will end no later than 6:00 PM today, and the public comment period ends when the hearing ends, after the comment -- or at 5:00 PM, whichever comes later. After the comment period is closed, OSE will review the comments and then publish a final rule, which will become effective no later than thirty days after its publication. Today's proceeding is being recorded. Please keep yourselves on mute to avoid background noise or having a background conversation captured by the auto transcript feature. For those interested in viewing the auto transcript in the bottom-left corner of the window, you should have a button indicating the closed caption symbol. That will allow you to see the auto transcript. The recording of the public comments today, as well as the written comments received through the NYC Rules website and the OSE Rules email inbox, will be available for inspection, and requests for access to the records may be made by email to oserules@cityhall.nyc.gov or by calling 646-576-3533. We will now move to hear from our first speakers. The first five speakers in order will be State Senator Brad Hoilman, State Senator Jabari Brisport, a State Assembly Member Richard Gottfried, State Assembly Member Deborah Glick, State Assembly Member Harvey Epstein. I am going to ask for everyone's patience while I get used to the unmuting function. Senator Hoilman, I believe I've unmuted you.
Hello, Mr. Klosner. It's good to see you. It's good to see my colleagues. I'm State Senator Brad Hoilman. Just quickly to acknowledge one of my colleagues, Assembly Member Richard Gottfried, for all of his historic work on fighting the inequities in our housing market, particularly around short-term rental housing. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony regarding Local Law 18. I wanted to let you know that I strongly support the proposed rules as written. I represent New York's 27th Senate District, which includes the neighborhoods from Canal Street to 72nd Street on the west side and from Third Street to 56th Street on the east side. And the new year, I'm going to represent the 47th District, which stretches from Christopher Street all the way to 103rd on the west side. Short-term rentals are an issue that is deeply pertinent to both my current and my new districts and our constituents. As we work to address our housing crisis, ensuring a well-regulated short-term rental market is crucial. This is highlighted by recent reports brought to light, bringing to light the fact that there are now more short-term rental units available to rent than long-term rental units. That is hard to believe. Earlier this year, an analysis found as many as 7,000 long-term units available in the market, while the number of short-term rentals hovers around 10,000 to 20,000 units in Airbnb alone. Since their inception, short-term rentals have cited Section 230 of the Communication Decency Act to skirt existing state and local laws by arguing that they are third-party platforms who simply provide postings that are beyond their control. Yet, as the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has upheld, platforms that charge and accept a fee cannot be considered neutral providers of information while simultaneously acting as an active participant in a financial transaction. Despite this, short-term rental providers have turned a blind eye, forcing constituents and visitors alike to cope with irresponsible guests and hosts and depriving our neighbors of desperately needed permanent housing. Local Law 18 affirms that platforms aren't neutral actors, and by requiring hosts to prove their permanent occupancy compats the rise of illegal hotels like those operated by Metro Butler. By mandating that hosts provide information to obtain a registration, Local Law 18 provides an additional measure of security for visitors and neighbors alike. Finally, I'm pleased to see that Local Law 18 will ensure that short-term rentals aren't permitted in NYCHA housing and private buildings that prohibit such dwellings. This will help ensure that New York's already strained housing stock of affordable housing isn't further diminished by hosts acting in bad faith against the public interest and the terms of their lease deed, tenant association, or co-op board. Having seen the City Council pass Local Law 18 almost unanimously at the beginning of this year, I am delighted to see the Mayor's Office of Special Enforcement taking steps to implement these rules. These reforms are long overdue, and New Yorkers need this protection now. I urge this body to implement the proposed rules as written. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to testify this morning.
Thank you. I should state for the record that the OSE team has also been joined by legal team supervisor Aaron Zimmerman. The next speaker is State Senator Jabari Brisport. I don't see the senator. Senator, if you're here on a -- ah, yes, I do. Let me unmute you. Senator, I'm trying to unmute you.
Okay, can you hear me?
There you go. Thank you, Senator, for your patience. I appreciate it.
Thank -- no, thank you for hosting this hearing. I can just switch over to my notes. Thank you all. I came today to speak in favor of Local Law 18, Intro 2309A. Reminder of all, we have a hotel model that is thriving in the city. It is a great model. You know, you get someone who makes your bed every day. You get a cute little soap, and the workers get union wages. It's a well-regulated model that provides comfort and safety for all involved. In contrast, you have the Airbnb model, which is an unregulated version of the hotel model that reduces housing stock for residents of New York City who need them and exacerbates our housing crisis. So regulations are good. They protect everyone involved. Registering these short-term rentals are good. It will generate data for our city and protect rent-regulated housing and put thousands of units back on the market. This bill was modeled on the Santa Monica statute, where it survived three lawsuits to stop it, and it is going strong. Again, I am in favor of Local Law 18. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. The next speaker is Assembly Member Dick Gottfried. One moment, Assembly Member. I apologize to everybody. We need to keep folks on mute to protect the auto transcript function and to ensure that speakers aren't interrupted by background noise. And it is proving a technological challenge. I don't see the Assembly Member. Ah, here he is. Assembly Member, I've requested an unmute. I think you may need to also unmute. Okay, Assembly Member, you should be unmuted. I apologize to everybody. I -- while we try to figure out how to hear from Assembly Member Gottfried, let's go to Assembly Member Deborah Glick. Okay, it does not appear that Assembly Member Glick is present, so let me say the next several speakers will be Assembly Member Harvey Epstein. Epstein, and who I believe that I saw. Assembly Member Gottfried, are you there? I see that you're back. No, I have an empty video. Okay. I see Jackson Fisher Ward, a staff member for Assembly Member Epstein. Mr. Fisher Ward, are you -- you appear to be off-mute to us. Okay, we'll move along and come back. Again, all folks who are not available to testify when called on, we will circle back to Assembly Member Emily Gallagher.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to testify today. I am here in support of the local law. I represent District 50 in Williamsburg and Greenpoint, a district that is completely overrun with short-term rentals of full apartments. With the implementation of this rule, we can set up a fair and transparent system where everyone plays by the same rules. Right now, we're in a housing crisis, especially in my district, that's exacerbated by thousands of homes being held off the market for illegal short-term rentals. In my district, the average price is about $175 per night. That means that for a year, a landlord can make $425,000 off of one apartment, whereas no one would be able to afford that rent at an average salary here in this district. That's about $5,250 a month. Our average rent in this district is now over $3,000, and we are losing so many of our working-class people in this district. It is absolutely critical that we get these apartments back online. This local law has worked in other very popular destinations in California, and I think we should absolutely be following that model and not weakening the law in any way, shape, or form. Thank you so much for this hearing, and thank you very much for trying to regulate Airbnb, which is causing a lot of displacement in my district. Thank you.
Thank you, Assembly Member. The next three speakers are Assembly Member Farah Soufran Forrest, Assembly Member-elect Tony Simone, and Assembly Member Zoran Mamdani. Is Assembly Member Forrest available to speak?
Good morning. Can everyone hear me? My name's Karen Nurevsky. I'm the Chief of Staff for Assembly Member Forrest, who wasn't able to testify this morning, but wants to express strong support for Local Law 18 and implementation of the rules that were presented at the beginning of this meeting. Assembly Member Forrest represents the 57th District in Brooklyn, which includes neighborhoods like Fort Greene, Clinton Hill, and Bed-Stuy, which have an enormous number of short-term rentals. And the district also has a severe housing shortage and affordability crisis. To build on the point that Senator Hoilman made earlier, if you currently look on StreetEasy, it shows only nine apartments that are available for $2,500 or less in the Clinton Hill neighborhood, while Airbnb shows over 50 properties available for the month of December in that same neighborhood. When fully implemented, Local Law 18 will put tens of thousands of apartments back on the long-term rental market and address the housing crisis that's taking place in our district and across the city. Local Law 18 will not prevent Airbnb hosts from renting out extra rooms in their home. What it does do is ensure compliance with existing state and local laws. And I can't understand why we would allow property owners to make money on Airbnb if they're not willing to register their property and follow the local laws as written. We really appreciate the work that's been done by the Mayor's Office of Special Enforcement and the advocacy of groups like the Coalition on Illegal Hotels that has gone into passing this local law, and we really hope that it will be implemented to its full extent to regulate the short-term rental market and preserve affordable housing in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you, Assembly Member. I do ask, and as a courtesy to all, I see that the chat has a number of comments back and forth about what speakers have presented. I ask if you would like to make a comment. This is what this hearing is for. I encourage you to raise your hand and make that comment. My biggest fear is that I am not 100% sure that the chat will preserve in the way that the spoken testimony and the transcript will. So I strongly encourage folks, if you have feelings about prior testimony, if you have things to add, we're here to hear from you. I encourage you to raise your hand to do it instead of putting it in the chat. The next speaker is Assembly Member-elect Tony Simone. Assembly Member-elect, I've requested you unmute. I think if you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak. Assembly Member-elect Simone. Okay, we will -- we will move on temporarily to Assembly Member Zoran Mamdani.
Thank you, Christian, and thank you to the Mayor's Office. My name is Zoran Mamdani. I am the Assembly Member for the 36th District in Northwest Queens, currently much of Astoria. And I am here today because in all of Queens, Astoria is the neighborhood that had the highest jump in rent increases over the past year. The average rent paid in August of this year was up 34% compared to August of last year, narrowing into specific housing options. I live in a one-bedroom in Astoria, and those have seen a 40% increase over the past year, from $2,055 a month to $2877 a month. If we go into two bedrooms, it's up 40% as well, with the average rent skyrocketing from $2,492 to $3,480. I say all of this because there is a direct link between this increase in rental rates and the proliferation of Airbnb, as stated most
Assembly Member-elect, we've -- Assembly Member, we've lost your audio.
Sorry. Can you hear me now, Christian?
Yes.
Okay.
If you don't mind backing up just a little bit in your comments.
Totally fine. My point being is that my neighborhood has seen about a 34% increase in the cost of rental prices from last year to this year. And the reason that is relevant is because the New York City Controller's Office found, amongst others, that almost 10% of rental increases are attributable to Airbnb, a company whose business model has led to tens of thousands of housing units being used as full-time hotels rather than homes. And so I'm here today to testify in full support of Local Law 18 and for the proposed rules as written. And amidst all of the fear-mongering around this law, I want to be very clear. Local Law 18 does not alter state or city law governing short-term rentals. What it does is simply require that short-term rental hosts register their operations with the city, and that only registered units be advertised for rent, prohibiting booking services like Airbnb from processing transactions for unregistered listings. So the reason that that is so critical is it builds upon so much of the testimony of my colleagues, which speaks to the fact that currently, as is, this is an almost entirely unregulated market, and the consequences have been disastrous for New Yorkers. If properly implemented, as we all hope it to be, Local Law 18 will bring tens of thousands of illegal hotel rooms back into the housing market as homes for New Yorkers. That is my testimony for today. I stand in full support of this law and the rules as proposed, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Assembly Member. Assembly Member-elect Tony Simone. I see in the chat he's having some trouble unmuting himself. Can we try again, Assemblymember-elect?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Assemblymember-elect Tony Simone. This testimony is on behalf of myself and Assemblymember Richard Gottfried. We thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of the proposed rules to implement Local Law 18 of 2022. The proposed rules will strengthen the city's ability to curtail illegal short-term rentals and ensure compliance with the state's multiple dwelling law, the city's Building Code and Housing Maintenance Code, and other state and city laws. Local Law 18 and proposed rules do not change the underlying law on the short-term rentals are illegal. They make those laws more enforceable, protecting the city's housing stock, as we all know, the safety and welfare of tenants in their homes, and protect visitors to the city. The city's housing affordability crisis has been compounded by the proliferation of illegal short-term rentals and the platforms that have facilitated them. Illegal short-term rentals first became a serious problem about 2004. Soon Airbnb turned this practice into a big business. Since then, it has been estimated about 15,000 units of housing has been removed from the market by STRs. While we have made progress, thanks to the 2010 state legal hotel law, the great efforts of OSC and the City Council legislation will still have far to go. The encouraging news is the Office of Special Enforcement has been tasked with combating illegal short-term rentals and related businesses. In 2019, it's reported receiving 3,871 complaints for over 2,500 different locations in the city. It issued over 3,500 violations at 683 different locations, and imposed over $7 million in fines on the offending parties. It is estimated that 85% of all Airbnb active listings in New York City are illegal. This points to the inherent limits of the current system, and when neighbors complain, it's often at the risk of potential retribution from landlords and others. We again emphasize that neither Local Law 18 nor the proposed regulations underlie state or city laws governing when short-term rentals are legal. They only create realistic mechanisms for enforcement, including imposing reasonable responsibilities of those who want to rent out premises for short-term rentals and on platforms like Airbnb. Similar laws have been passed in Santa Monica and Boston. In Boston, its remedial effects were felt immediately, and Airbnb had to restore more than half of its listings because they were not registered with the city. Airbnb and similar platforms keep saying what good neighbors they are by making sure their practices live up to the state and local city standards, Local Law 18, and these new regulations help make that a reality. We urge you to adopt the proposed regulations. Thank you for OSC's years of determined work to enforce the law, and thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Assemblymember-elect. And do I understand correctly, when you said you were commenting on behalf of you and Assemblymember Gottfried, do you know that he is not coming back to give his own comments? You're unmute, Assemblymember-elect. I'm sorry, Assemblymember, we can't. Okay, well, we'll assume, we'll keep an eye-
You're going to go out?
Yes. Is Assemblymember Gottfried coming back, or he is-
He will not be.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for delivering comments. I'm happy with you both. Okay, Assemblymember Harvey Epstein. And then we'll go to Councilmember Gail Brewer, Mike Harp, and Rich Goldberg. Assemblymember Epstein?
We wasted so much time. We wasted like 20 minutes. We made some problems there.
Okay, we will circle back. Councilmember Gail Brewer? Okay, I don't see Councilmember Brewer. Mike Harp?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Kloster. I appreciate the time. My name is Mike Harp. I'm fully supportive of regulation. However, I have major issues with proposed implementation that hurts hard-working New Yorkers like myself. My wife and I were raising two young children in one of the most expensive cities in the world, New York City. We've been renting out our home in Bed-Stuy on Airbnb since 2015 to supplement our income and make it affordable to visit family members in the U.S. and abroad during the summer and holidays. We have aging parents and grandparents. We want to make sure our young children have a connection with them in their lives, and renting our home makes it affordable for us to do that. Renting our home four to six weeks a year does not impact the housing shortage, but it does make a massive financial difference for our family. It also brings incremental tourism income into our neighborhood from international visitors and visitors from across the U.S. I take great pride in actively promoting local businesses to our Airbnb guests so they can also experience the thriving neighborhood and community that we love so much versus only visiting the typical tourist destinations in Manhattan, which has been the status quo pre-Airbnb. The proposed legislation is a major overreach of the government controlling how I use the home that I own and pay taxes on. In addition to the legislation, it risks creating safety issues by not allowing the separation of living spaces or having locked doors for short-term stays less than 30 days. The requirement of stays of 30 days or more also increased the risk of squatter laws being used opportunistically against homeowners and feels not very well thought out. The combination of these two requirements listed above will dramatically prohibit homeowners like me from supplementing my family's income in one of the most expensive cities in the world and make it cost-prohibitive for our family to travel to see loved ones during the holidays. Rather than penalizing law-abiding homeowners like myself and making it harder for families to survive in New York City, the government should go after the true bad actors in this: illegal hotel operators that are using Airbnb and other rental platforms by having multiple listings on offer, none of which are their primary residents. These are large businesses, not everyday New Yorkers like myself. I understand the need for legislation. As I said, I'm supportive of it, but please do so in a way that goes after the true bad actors and not hard-working New Yorkers like myself and others in the community that have joined this call. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mike Harp. The next speaker is Rich Goldberg. I don't see a Rich Goldberg in the names of participants. So we will come back. Is Assemblymember Marcella Matines available? Assemblymember Matines? Forgive me if I'm saying your name incorrectly. Okay, the next several speakers will be Nikki Franzita, Scott Kraus, Michael McKee. Nikki Franzita?
Good morning. My name is Nikki Franzita, and I'm Vice President of the Hotel Association of New York City. The Hotel Association of New York City is fully supportive of the proposed rules for Local Law 18. For years, illegal short-term rentals have been a significant problem for New York City's hospitality sector. These short-term rentals have threatened to undercut the economic vitality of the hotel industry in New York City and its vast contributions to the city's tax revenue and tourism sector by competing for customers while avoiding the taxes leveraged upon brick-and-mortar hotels. Prior to the pandemic, hotels raised $3.2 billion in tax revenue and added $22 billion in total economic benefits for New York City. In addition, unlike hotels which rightly have to adhere to the most stringent of safety standards, many of the illegal short-term rentals across the city are not up to DOB codes and compose a safety risk to the travelers who stay at such rentals. The implementation of these rules would play an instrumental role in curbing the problem of illegal short-term rentals, as well as aid in the overall recovery of New York City's hotel industry, which has been decimated by the economic strains of COVID-19 and been required to lay off tens of thousands of New Yorkers in the process. This implementation would place hotels on an equal playing field to compete with short-term rentals for customers in New York City, especially as the city begins to welcome more tourists and the hospitality industry begins to rebound from the pandemic. Pre-pandemic, the hotel industry employed 55,000 people in good, middle-class jobs, and we are eager to be in a position for all of these employees to be able to return to work. Thank you so much for the opportunity to weigh in on this extremely important matter.
Thank you. The next speaker is Scott Kraus. I know Mr. Kraus was perhaps the first person to appear, although I do not see him in the list anymore. Mr. Kraus, are you there? Okay, we'll come back to him. The next speaker is Michael McKee. After that is Alfred Roach and Adam Lindenbaum. Mr. McKee? Michael? And while we're waiting for Michael McKee to unmute, let me just say, I will try to refrain from using Mr. or Ms. Mrs. If folks want to alter their screen name to include their pronouns, I'll be happy to go from there. Otherwise, I'll use your full name whenever possible. All right. Mr. McKee?
Finally, sorry, finally got unmuted. Good morning, and thanks for the opportunity to testify. My name is Michael McKee, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Tenants Political Action Committee. Tenants PAC is fully supportive of Local Law 18, and we are fully supportive of the regulations as written. We want to thank Mayor Eric Adams, and we want to thank the Mayor's Office of Special Enforcement for this initiative. We believe for a long, long time that a registration system as exists in Santa Monica and other cities is the only way we're ever going to get actual enforcement of the law against illegal short-term rentals. If there's anything we've learned in the last 10, 15 years is that the platforms like Airbnb and HomeAway will not self-police, despite the fact that they give lip service to, you know, getting rid of the bad actors, et cetera, et cetera. The bottom line is that the overwhelming majority of their profits come from illegal hotels, and we believe that this registration system is finally a way to get some enforcement of the laws that prohibit illegal short-term rentals. I want to also say that there is an important tenant protection aspect to this law in that tenants in rent-regulated apartments and shareholders and co-ops will be protected from putting themselves in a position of getting evicted because they will not be able to get a registration number to engage in short-term rental activity unless they have permission from the landlord, which no landlord will give, or unless they have permission from the co-op, which no co-op will give. And we know that many tenants have been evicted because of short-term rental activity, and we know that many shareholders have been evicted, especially in places like Penn South. Finally, I do hope that the implementation of this law is on schedule. We agreed in negotiating the bill with the City Council last year that we would give the administration a year to build the online portal. I hope that everything will be ready to go and that, I believe, it's 13 lines will be filled, and you'll be staffed up and ready to enforce this law vigorously. And we look forward to working with the Office of Special Enforcement, and we want to thank you for your efforts in a very important housing activity. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alfred Roach.
Hello, my name is Alfred Roach, and I am not affiliated with any professional organization. I am a tenant, a legal tenant, in a 42-apartment unit on 47th Street between 9th and 10th Avenue in Hell's Kitchen. Over the course of the past number of years with an influx during COVID, this building has seen a rampant use of six units being used as hotels, and the landlord is powerless to get rid of these bad actors except through the normal eviction process. So this has taken two years now. Four of the units are now evicted, and two of the units are still under eviction that was started two years ago. Here's the problem: I don't see one reason why good actors are being restricted with this new rule. That's number one. And number two, I don't see you having any concern for those of us who live in these situations where bad actors are, and these people don't even live in the city. They rent from Texas and Arizona. Those are the two places I know of. My quality of life has turned to crap over the years. There are homeless people living in our hallways because access codes to our building are being given away randomly. There's garbage piling up in the hallways because people that use Airbnb think that somehow this is a hotel and somebody else is going to remove their garbage. It's also dangerous. We've had the police out here a number of times over the past couple of years because people who are Airbnb-ing have been violent. And what was the other thing? Oh, just a nuisance. During COVID, we had one of these units rent out, a unit for rave parties. That's 30 people coming into a private residence for an evening to have a rave party. So I support this rule. I would like one good actor who's against this proposal to give me a good reason why everybody can't play by the same rules so that we can get rid of the bad actors. I see no reason why you people who are renting legally can't register to rent. We register our cars. We register to vote. Let's register to use our pro- Oh, here's the other thing, is if you're staying on your property, this doesn't affect you. All you have to do is register. This is for people that aren't even staying on the property. I don't know how much more time I have, but I'm going to leave it go at that. Obviously, I support this rule. I have been paying attention to it since January when I gave testimony to the City Council, and I think those of you who do not support this rule need to ask yourself a simple question: Are you helping the community you live in, or are you just being antagonistic for your own selfish purposes? Thank you.
There was a little overtime. I do, I want to ask again for folks, there are a lot of comments in the chat. I am trying to keep an eye on for questions about the proceeding. I've seen a couple of comments about the order of speakers. Again, we are calling people in the order that we received the request to speak. For folks who did not speak in advance, or who did not request to speak in advance, please raise your hand. Once all of the people who requested in advance to speak will begin going through the folks who've raised their hand, and we'll call them in the order that they raised their hand, to the best ability that WebEx can present them to me in that order. I also ask, I understand there are some passionate issues. This is a chance for everyone to communicate with the government about what the policy should be, and I ask folks, no matter your perspective, to avoid from attacking the other speakers. This is a space where everyone should feel comfortable speaking their truth, sharing their viewpoints, and being heard. The next speaker is- The next speaker is Adam Lindenbaum.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Adam Lindenbaum. I'm a member of Rosenberg &amp; Estes, PC. Rosenberg &amp; Estes is litigation and transactional counsel to owners, landlords, and managers throughout the city of New York. Executive Director Klosner, thank you for the opportunity to speak today at this forum regarding the Office of Special Enforcement's rules to be enacted in furtherance of Local Law 18. Short-term rentals are a thorn in the side of building owners and long-term residents alike. The disputes about these issues, they disrupt the daily operation and lives of residents and otherwise well-run residential properties. Litigating these disputes in the Housing Court and Supreme Court, like Mr. Roach just referred to, they are often difficult to prove. They're slow, they're expensive, given the realities of the state and city's overburdened court system. The landlord bar welcomes the Local Law 18 and the opportunity to enroll our clients' properties on the prohibited buildings list. Some points of concern that we'd like the Office of Special Enforcement to take into consideration is what exactly a landlord or its agent will be expected to certify about the prohibitions against short-term rentals in its buildings to get on the list. What if a lease form across many tenancies are different at a particular property? What if only some of the landlord's leases are prohibitive of short-term rentals? What if that prohibition comes only in a rider or in the house rules to which the lease refers and are incorporated by reference? My point is only to say it would be helpful if the OSE's online registration form could include some examples of acceptable prohibitions from a landlord's perspective to eliminate uncertainty about what right the lease clause, rider, or rule is to be included. Next point is, it is clear that the host's registration has a time limit under Local Law 18 tethered to the lease term, but does the prohibited buildings list expire or otherwise need to be refreshed periodically by the landlord? Is there presumed continuity for owners? And what would happen if a lease expires and a new tenant comes in? Can the owner presume continuity if the tenant changes, but the actual prohibition in the lease form does not? The last point that I wanted to make is about violations. What steps can an owner take to be kept off of the violations that the Office of Special Enforcement will issue for unauthorized short-term rentals? Is being on the prohibited buildings list some kind of shield against owners? How exactly will the Office of Special Enforcement know who to fine if the hosts are not registered in accordance with Local Law 18 in the first place? We fear that this will just be another series of fines that will attach to real property and hopefully not show up on a title search like other ECB violations. This comes from, you know, real concern from the landlord's perspective, given other restrictions in other areas of law, especially those recently enacted under the HSTPA of 2019. A landlord cannot take more than one month's security to protect itself against violations issued based upon a tenant's default. And a landlord can't seek like an ECB fine against a tenant in a non-payment proceeding anymore. So these restrictions against landlords leave them exposed when landlords are supportive of this law and intend to register on the prohibited buildings list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindenbaum. The next several speakers, the next speaker will be Leah James. After Leah will be Milton Galloway, Paul Briscoe, and Wan Chow.
Hello, good morning. My name is Leah James. I am the organizer-director for Housing Conservation Coordinators. Housing Conservation Coordinators is a community-based organization that serves Hell's Kitchen and Clinton Neighborhood in Manhattan. We also work with our member organization, the West Side Neighborhood Alliance. ACC has been organizing tenant associations and providing housing legal services, just to name a few of our programs that we provide. Our organization and tenants that we organize, we support this law. In its implementation form, we're happy to hear that when implemented strongly, well, potentially puts tens of thousands of apartments back on long-term rental market and hold property owners accountable that are doing illegal hotel practices. In the Upper West Side, we are seeing property owners doing illegal hotel practices, and what comes with that is tenant harassment and warehousing of apartments as well. Building-wide and individual apartment issues and other predatory practices that violate the New York City Housing Maintenance Code. I am currently organizing four rent-stabilized buildings, 104 West 83rd Street, that has 19 units. Out of 19 units, 16 are short-term rentals, and long-term tenants are threatened to be displaced. I also have 438 West 45th Street has 14 units, and out of 14 units, six are short-term rentals, and three apartments are warehoused. Then last but not least, I'm also organizing 440 West 45th Street, a 15-unit building, five apartments are short-term rental, and three apartments are warehoused. And the warehouse departments are completely damaged. We need to pass Local Law 18 and a strong implementation process that holds landlords accountable again and protect also long-term residential tenants in that process. We are currently in a housing crisis. We need to protect rent-stabilized apartments in New York City, and this bill can also support to give formerly homeless formerly homeless and homeless New Yorkers a chance to be housed as well. Thank you for the opportunity for myself and ACC to testify this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Milton Galloway? We've requested Milton Galloway to unmute. Again, I'm going to plead with folks. I very much want to hear what you all have to say. The chat has questions about how people sign up that are scrolling past too fast with people's comments. I really ask that attendees, if this were an in-person hearing and people were shouting out comments, they would be asked not to. That's essentially what I'm doing here. It is interfering with my ability to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak, and I want to hear from everybody, but I just ask that you hold your comments until you speak instead of putting them in the chat box. I will do, I do also want to confirm, however, that we will be cutting and pasting the chat and making it. Hold on, Milton, please. We will be cutting and pasting and preserving the chat. But again, I ask that people keep their comments to their turn when it's their turn to speak. Okay, Milton, please go ahead.
Good morning, everyone, present on this platform. I'm Milton Galloway. So far, whatever I had to say has been basically covered by the members speakers that were before me.
Sir, a little louder, please. I'm having trouble hearing. I assume other attendees are as well.
No, I'm saying so far, whatever I had to say has been covered by many of the previous speakers before me. However, I am supportive of the legislation that calls for registration. And I don't think Airbnb should be bashed away. I'm hearing some folks speak of Airbnb. It has been beneficial to the working-class people who sees it as an additional income to supplement their mortgage and other household issues, maybe paying for their student, their children's education. So I am for the registration and not for bashing of the Airbnb, the way some folks have been generalizing things about Airbnb. It's not being very wide. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Paul Briscoe.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Paul Briscoe. I'm a resident of Cobble Hill, Brooklyn, and a homeowner, and I'm not in favor of Local Law 18. How you can tell the people of this city that own their homes, as in our case, over 100 years through family, that pay an exorbitant amount of taxes, who they can have stay in their home or what they can and cannot do in their home is utterly overreaching and authoritarian. My wife and I, along with many others you'll hear from today, are all desperately trying to hold on financially just to stay in this city we've grown up in. And with the cost of living climbing higher and higher, it's getting close to impossible to do that. The income we receive from short-term rentals, which isn't tax-free, by the way, is the only way we can keep living in our homes. The rules and regulations the OSE are imposing are designed to garner even more control and revenue than what we already comply with. It's unrealistic and unfair. People that seek out these short-term rentals are looking for a different experience in New York City that is just not found at a hotel stay. Many of the guests that visit want to experience our city like natives. In some instances, stay close to family and friends while still having all the comforts of home. While the city takes over hotel rooms for the homeless community, people are still paying premium prices for tiny hotel rooms that could never be kept as clean or safe as we provide our guests in our own residence. The people that choose to stay with us are well-protected and a safe and pristine environment. These proposals ridiculously suggest that even spaces that are shared have no locks or restricted access to private areas where normally family members have locks on their doors within their homes. So how is it realistic to have a guest or a host feel safe with such precautions? Don't hotel rooms have locks on their room doors? This is completely senseless and ridiculous. Speaking to the concern of short-term rentals contributing to the shortage of housing, the portion of our home we use to host is also a space that we do not choose to rent long-term. We use it to have family over, friends, as well being our private entertainment area for watching TV, entertaining. Instead of infringing on tax-paying homeowners, you should be focusing your efforts on the individuals in LLCs that abuse the short-term rental laws, not small individual hosts like my wife and I that actually depend on this income. We don't need the city micromanaging and infringing on our lives like this. Short-term rentals existed before you decided to create this department. Why not just go after fees? After all, getting more money from us, that sounds like what the goal is. It's evident you're trying to overwhelm anybody that would still want to try to do this legitimately with requirements on every angle, along with hosts and hosting platforms such as Airbnb. After quite a bit of reading, I determined not only is the city looking to collect some portion of revenue from hosts through application and registration fees that will be ongoing, but they clearly want to overburden the host and the website with over-the-top reporting. I don't want to speak much longer. We need this income. We live in these homes. We can police this. And we're not saying there aren't laws that maybe should be in place, but some of them are absolutely overreaching. Keep the people here. This is our neighborhood, and we should be in control of who's living inside of our homes and who isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Wan Chow. Then the next several speakers will be Joe Hong Chin, Brawlio Bello, Jenny Taylor, and then Maurizio Citrolo. Wan Chow?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I am in support of this local law. I am very concerned about the high cost of living in New York City right now. I personally own my own home in Elmhurst, where my family and I have been for 15 years. If we were to buy the same house today, I'm not sure we would be able to afford it now. I believe in large part because of Airbnb. Many homes in my area that should be owned by families are continuously being bought up for the purpose of being used as short-term Airbnb rentals, and it's creating a housing market that's not viable for the long term. I have friends who are starting their own families right now, and they're in the market to buy homes, but they're being outpriced in the current neighborhoods that they've been living their entire lives. I'm very concerned for my children, who will have a very hard time being able to afford a house when they're older due to the depletion of the housing stock. The more that Airbnb goes unchecked and people are allowed to buy a property in order to rent them out as Airbnbs, the more I worry that younger New Yorkers will not be able to have a stable living situation in the future like I do currently. I'd like to thank the city for taking action against rampant abuse by platforms like Airbnb. Rules like this are very important for the future of our city, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Hong Chin. Okay, I will come back to Joe Hong Chin. Is Brawlio Bello present? I don't see. Probably a Bello. The next speaker is Jenny Taylor. I see there are two folks named Jen. If one of you is Jenny Taylor, are either of the folks Jen named Jenny Taylor?
Me, okay, I found it. Okay, sorry.
Thank you so much.
All right, hi, that's me. I'm a widow in Bed-Stuy. We own a three-family home, and we rent out two of the apartments. I am always present in the downstairs of the house. It's enabled us to afford, to continue living here after the death of my husband. We enjoy meeting people from all over the world. I think that a lot of our visitors enjoy coming here because it's an experience where they're seeing a neighborhood rather than Midtown Manhattan. They also support local businesses. For example, you know, there's a coffee shop, there's a wine shop, there's all these local bars that people go to. It would, I feel that registration is normal, but with a three- or a two-family home where the host is present and owning, we shouldn't be burdened by these extra taxes and oversight. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And I'm glad we could see you, that you were there before we moved on. The next speaker is Maurizio Citrolo. I've sent a request to someone named Maurizio.
Good morning. Do you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chris. Good morning. So, thank you, and I would like to thank you, the Mayor Office, for the work on this legislation, which I believe responds fairly to the serious issue of illegal short-term in our city. A registration system for those rental units is necessary so the city will be able to better understand the issue at hand. To me, since thought this law will have the effort of accommodating short-term rentals listed in a good faith by an individual, while stopping people from abusing the housing market through a rental platform like Airbnb, I stand and support for this registration as I believe they will protect our city homes and affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next several speakers are Emily Solar, Keith Sterling, Juliette Campbell, Lisa Golden, and W. Gomez. Emily Solar?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, good morning. My name is Emily Solar, and I've seen quite of changes in New York. A lot of changes recently has been especially distressing and troublesome. I'm seeing native New Yorkers get pushed out of their homes and neighborhoods and every borough. A big part of it is Airbnb, which makes it possible for wealthy people to take off homes off the market and turn them into these illegal hotels. These illegal hotels don't create jobs, their profits don't get infused back into the neighborhood, they're just exploitation of our homes and our buildings. However, if the city puts serious regulation on Airbnb, then thousands and thousands of homes will return to the market. So please put these regulations in place to revitalize our city who desperately needs it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I apologize for mispronouncing your last name. The next speaker is Keith Sterling. After Keith Sterling, we'll go to Councilmember Gail Brewer, who I see has joined us, if she's ready. Keith Sterling? I see a Keith, I'm going to unmute a Keith.
Good morning.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Go ahead, we can hear you.
Great. To me, it seems like the city is just always behind the times and trying to hold on to what was. I remember a time when the city was trying to ban Looper and Lyft, and they valued the taxi medallions as if they were all somehow powerful, and ultimately, the city found a way to let those companies operate to the benefit of everybody, and that's because it's what people wanted. And it's the same thing with Airbnb, it's what people want to use, and that's why that service is so popular. People don't want to stand in the rain on the side of the street trying to hail a cab, and they don't want the city telling them where they can or cannot stay. Mostly, I host grandparents visiting their kids and young grandkids, and generally, the apartments in the city are small, and the families don't have room in their place to host their in-laws. And the in-laws want to be close, they don't want to travel half an hour back and forth just to visit their family. I hosted traveling nurses during the pandemic. I hosted people with COVID, who were quarantining from their family members, runners for the New York City Marathon, businesspeople who chose to work remotely and stay in our great city when they could have stayed anywhere in the world. A lot of times, we host people who are relocating from another city, and they want to try out a neighborhood, or maybe they're just in between apartments, and travelers from all around the world who want to stay in our city as a local and experience it that way. The benefit to our city from short-term rentals cannot be overstated. The city's position that they raise rent prices were economically detrimental is flawed. The benefits far outweigh the negatives. You know, to operate my units, I have full-time cleaners, I have full-time maintenance, I make use of a local laundromat, I buy furniture, I buy supplies, I use movers, I use delivery personnel. I'm actually generating more money for the city that people are using to pay their rent. My guests shop in local stores, they eat in local restaurants, neighborhoods that wouldn't traditionally be for tourists. They help keep the local establishments in business, and especially coming out of a pandemic when so many people were struggling, it's us as Airbnb hosts that actually kept this city going. And eliminating the short-term rentals will actually drive up rental prices, it'll reduce tourism, and it'll hurt the city's economy. By eliminating the Airbnbs, what'll happen is you have the big-wig investors come in, they redevelop properties, rental prices go up. If the city wants to make an argument that the city needs more housing, build more housing. Most of us are small-family landlords, we're burdened with city regulation, and we were left with the city's population that was dwindling. And, you know, we do the Airbnb, it's not just for the monetary benefit, but we actually enjoy sharing our city with our guests, you know, taking in travelers is as old as time. And we're able to create relationships with our guests and offer them a personalized experience that, you know, hotels or other means just aren't able to do. And just listening to the people that are speaking here and speaking for myself, you know, as hosts, we are the heartbeat of this city. We are true New Yorkers, and we take pride in the city that we represent. For those that think that the hotel industry is influencing these regulations, let us not forget that competition breeds innovation. Competition is the foundation that makes our country great. Restricting competition helps nobody. The city's overreaching in its authority and attempting to dictate who can and cannot stay in our homes and for how long. A lot of the regulations that are being set forth just don't make sense. Why would a guest staying in an apartment for two weeks need fire sprinklers, and a guest staying in an apartment for a month not? It doesn't make sense. It's actually valuing one life over another. And the city argues that the short-term guests might not be as familiar with the building? Well, what about the new tenant that moves in in the first month that they're in the building? Shouldn't they be awarded those same protections? Obviously, their life should count as much the first month that they move in the building. And what I would propose, honestly, is we just need to have a lot of rules that make sense. So for fire safety stuff, we should have maps in every building, whether it's a long-term tenant or a short-term tenant, that shows them where the exits are, what to do. Make a video like an airplane, you want to move into a place, whether you're a long-term tenant or a short-term tenant, watch the safety video, be familiar with the building, have fire extinguishers in every single apartment in the city. A long-term guest, short-term guest, everybody should be afforded the same protections. And the fact is, for Airbnb and short-term rentals, the genie's already out of the bottle. People want the option of staying in various neighborhoods throughout the city that meet their needs for the time period of their choosing. You could eliminate all the short-term rentals today, but there's going to be a back cry, an outcry from people that they want this service, and you're going to be left dealing with that. But by making these regulations now, without coming up with a way of making this work, all that you're doing is you're hurting a lot of innocent people here that are trying to make their way, trying to do good for the city, trying to do good for their guests, representing the city in a positive way. These are the people, the New Yorkers that are here, that are going to be hurt by this policy for something that ultimately is going to be anyway. You can't take away from what the people want, we just need to find a way to make this work for everybody. And, you know, yeah, it's great that you, you know, can tax this and put people in hotels and make use of the hotels in that way and things like that, but let's work together to make this city better.
Thank you, Keith. I see in the comments concerns about time. I believed that Keith was wrapping up a couple of times, I don't want to cut anybody off, I do want folks to be heard, but we do want to hear from everybody. So I just ask all speakers to be mindful, so that we're not, I don't want to end up in a situation where I'm cutting people off. I ask everyone to, you know, to follow that rule for themselves, and we will step in if things go very long. We're going to go back, I see a few speakers that have been called, but we're skipped over, so the next speakers will go to Councilmember Gail Brewer. Then we will go to, I apologize, I said Joe Hong Chin, and I, it's clear from the chat, I can't find it because of all the comments, that I've horribly mispronounced the name. Ju Hong Chen will be next, and then Assemblymember Metenas will be after that. Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate, I am Gail Brewer, and I am representing the Upper West Side, and I'm probably the only person in America that has not booked a night or an event through Airbnb. I remember my son was traveling once, and he was in Airbnb, and even booked horse riding. I've never heard of such a thing, but that's what Airbnb does. I also want to just express my amazing support for Christian Klaasner and the staff at the Mayor's Office of Special Enforcement. I've been around 20 years in office, and we had 20 years of meetings for this disruptive Airbnb way before these regulations or any regulations. And I know that there were guests in apartment buildings, and call-ups, and condos, and rentals, and people were sick because they were partying, and there was really frightening people in the building. Call-ups and condos were looking for moving suitcases and scouring the list to see who was illegally participating. So the world has changed, but I would just want to say thank you very much to Christian Klaasner and his staff for making sure that that is not happening in the way that it was. We have other issues now, but it made a huge difference. So I am generally supportive of local law 18, especially as you heard from the gentleman from Queens, where there are buildings in the neighborhood that are wholly turned over to short-term rentals. That's not what I am supportive of, and I think anybody who is in New York and in neighborhood does not want that. So that's what this law, I think, should be addressing. I haven't heard from a lot of hosts, but I have heard, as you can hear from those who have been speaking, from people who are in small buildings and who would like the law to be modified slightly. Hosts in small owner-occupied buildings worry about having their names and addresses with financial information on a public site, you know, given the safety concerns that are very prevalent in New York today. The hosts give the address when a guest has been confirmed, and they have no problem registering with Airbnb as a host of short-term rental and all the aspects of that. I know that as building owners, I own a brownstone, I know, and we're listed on the Department of Finance, but not with financial information. The hosts in small buildings who live on the premises and who only host in their apartment or small building would like to be exempt from some of these proposals, not all of them, but some of the, I think you've heard from others. And the other comment I heard was that the registration process as currently implemented is onerous, especially for hosts in small buildings who rent to one or two families at a time. The hosts who are requesting exemption point out that their buildings, which they live in and own, have no violations, they're up to code, and of course, any building that's not up to code should not be part of this program. So what I'm saying is, generally, local law 18 makes sense. I want to thank Ben Kalos, former councilmember, for passing it. But, and I, but I do think, again, this is one of the challenges that I face as a councilmember now, what is the right way to implement a law? I can give you six other examples where we're trying to figure out the same thing. Open restaurants, very controversial, same problem, what works, what doesn't. But I think, you know, we should not be using whole buildings for short-term rentals. I think that it has to be small, it has to be owner-occupied, has to be something that is appropriate to renting very small numbers of families. So, and everything needs to be monitored, and the bad actors need to be fined and eliminated from the business, as the Mayor's Office for Special Enforcement has done, because I've been at the press conferences and seen these buildings that are absolutely out of sync. Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you on whatever choice you make. Thank you.
Thank you. We've learned that Assemblymember Deborah Quill will not be testifying, so we'll take we'll take her out of the queue. The next speaker is Ju Hong Chin, then Assemblymember Metenas, and I hope you correct my pronunciation, I'm sure I've gotten that wrong at least one of the times, and then Juliette Campbell. For the folks who have their hands up, I think I've seen in the chat, I just want to let folks know that there are about 14 more speakers who have signed up in advance, and then we'll go to the people who have their hand up. Ju Hong Chin?
Hi, hi, hi.
Chen, I apologize.
Yeah, I got, I have lived in Staten Island for 15 years, I'm terrified of what Airbnb can do to New York if there are no rules to put in place. I'm not talking about renting out my basement or room in my, in your house. People have been doing that for as long as time, it's not a bad way to make extra money if you need it. I'm talking about moguls and rich, rich people and landlords who choose to rent out apartments on that sideline Airbnb instead of a long-term home for people and family. It's obvious, don't buy up affordable housing and use, use it to turn huge profit for yourself, there is selfishness. New Yorkers need this house, or we won't be able to New Yorkers anymore. I wonder what would Staten Island look like if a grown-up kid couldn't afford to move in a house down in the streets from their family? What would like, if owner of a local restaurant get price out of the neighborhood? It's been happening all over New York for a long time. It's a tragedy, and right now, we have the chance to stop it and protect our city and keep New York in New York. And I am asking for those rules to get in place, and it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Assemblymember Marcella Metenas. Assemblymember, you're off mute, and my, again, my apologies, I know I've gotten it wrong at least once, if not twice.
No, you're fine, I just want to make sure you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you so much. Good morning, everyone, panelists and appointed officials. My name is Assemblymember Marcella Metenas, and I represent the 51st Assembly District of Sunset Park, Red Hook and Bay Ridge. Today, I'm joining the public hearing to express my strong support of local law 18 as it's written. Under local law 18, it would not alter state or city law governing short rentals. Renting a dwelling unit for less than 30 days is currently prohibited by the New York State Multiple Dwelling Law and New York City Housing Maintenance Code, unless the permanent resident is present during the rental. Local law 18 will make it harder to rent out much-needed housing accommodations for short-term periods in violation to state and local laws, and keep many families housed as we enter an economic recession. At the beginning of this year, 4 million New Yorkers were living in unregulated housing with no basic protection from retaliatory evictions or predatory rent hikes. At a time when thousands of tenants are at risk of being evicted or displaced by the end of the year, the critical need to regulate short-term rental apartments and make them accessible for our working-class families for the long time is dire. The lucrative industry behind short-term rentals have already pushed our tight rental apartment stock to a breaking point, and they are not stopping now, pushing many unregulated tenants towards eviction for the sake of profiteering. Evictions can be tremendously disruptive, not only to the livelihood of the family, but the stability of entire community, when social relationships are torn apart by profiting hungry landlords and lucrative property investment funds. I know this is to be true, because in 2006, over half of the families in my 35 Unicor and stabilized building were evicted within six months after a new owner took over the property, and I was among one of the families who were forced to abandon their homes, their only home, because we lacked basic protection from predatory rent hikes and displaces at the time. Local law 18 is an essential protection for rent-regulated housing and other affordable housing programs. It will make it harder to rent out much-needed housing accommodations for short-term periods in violation to state and local laws, and keeping many families housed as we enter an economic recession. Keeping our families housed at this moment Keeping our families housed at this moment, we're coming back from a pandemic where people are trying to recover from trauma from the loss of death. I think that it's only right that we move in the right direction, and this is this is the way to do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, the next speakers are Juliette Campbell, then Lisa Golden, then William Gomez. Is Juliette Campbell? Yeah, I don't see Juliette Campbell. Lisa Golden. I do see a speaker named Lisa. Who her attendee named Lisa, I have requested unmute. Lisa, if you're Lisa Golden, can you unmute yourself and? Okay, we'll come back to Lisa. William Gomez. Okay, William, go ahead, we can hear you. And then I believe we've been joined by Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal, who we'll hear from after William Gomez.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Klosner, good morning, everyone in this meeting. Hello to everyone. My name is William Gomez, I represent me and my sister Beatrice Gomez, who are part of a minority here in the city. We love. Today we're here at this public hearing for our amazing and beautiful city of New York that we all share. We need to think as a community moving forward. We must also stick together to make it a better place for everyone. We need to understand that to do this well, we must find a way. We must find a middle ground that does not leave anyone behind and that also benefits new technologies, new technologies, our economy, unions, tourism, small lenders, residents, the middle class and companies as well. First, it is confusing that this new law will limit the usage of everyday New Yorker own private property. Also, it is problematic as the basis of our economy are free markets, free economy, and the right to private property. This last one is only the natural right of all individuals to create, obtain, and control their possession, beliefs, faculties, and opinion as well as the fruits of their labor. These new law could be potentially going against these fundamental principles to every American New Yorker. Second, Airbnb and similar platforms benefit middle class New Yorkers, local communities, and local governments. Their system of verification are every day safer. Airbnb Airbnb implements security checks. This is great because our communities are safe. Airbnb gives extra insurance in case guests and hosts needed. On the other hand, it benefits local committees, meet meetings as guests visit parts of the city never explored by others before. Lastly, local governments, because hosts are willing to contribute more. However, hosts have been paying taxes to the city already, contributing their fair share and bringing income to the city's finances. We get very confused when the city comes out with a law only allowing two guests per unit as more people using Airbnb are families or friends with greater number of more than two guests. They're visiting other cities and countries to spend time with their families and friends. And these kind of spaces are not offered by most hotels in the city as their maximum occupancy per party is up to four people per room in a limited amount of two bedrooms per room. And most hotels have an occupancy of single bedroom and up to two people and up to two people. In fact, this restriction of only two guests per unit could create a direct competition to the hotel industry of the city. If this is what the city is trying to avoid with this law, my question is, how can the city find a way in the middle that hosts that are small lenders could rent out their their entire apartment for less than 30 nights and pay the right amount of taxes to contribute to the city finances? This is important instead of banning platform that is already changing the war in a good way. How is it possible that New York City is left behind the world as we are the capital of this war? On the other hand, rent laws in the city are outdated, only filling up the necessities of people back in their 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, etc. We are in 2022 where new technology are the key to advancement. And nowadays nowadays, the needs of New Yorkers are different than the New Yorkers back in the days. The description of this law has many gaps, and the city could be leaving small lenders or middle class New Yorkers in financial jeopardy because these middle class New Yorkers are already struggling with the after pandemic effects. Just to mention high inflation, high taxation, high taxation, reduction in income, etc. I will say let's find a way in the middle and let's get more time to discuss this matter and change it in an equal way for everyone. And most important, let's don't have anyone behind. In addition, and in conclusion, if if the if the city is trying to address the problem of the housing market, we are here in New York, and I want to reference to Representative Sora Matdami, who spoke at the beginning of the of the conference. And I want to ask him about innovation queens in Long Island City in Astoria, where the big markets came and the big capitals came, were able to change, change all the zoning in the area without no problem. And I want to know that Housing Connect, that is the only solution the city is giving right now to supply the market. The criteria for Housing Connect is higher than the average income for New Yorkers, which is $50,000. It is problematic when we have to face that that is that is the only solution the city is coming up where they put apartments available in luxury buildings. In New York Housing Connect, that in order for you to qualify to those apartments, you need to make 120, 150, or maybe $180,000. If you make that amount of money, this this kind of address is not making a solution, is only creating an available unit for people who can even afford, because the middle class New Yorkers are not above $50,000. Thank you, everybody, and have a blessed day.
Thank you. I believe Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal is with us. We unmute. I see Erica Overton, who works for Assemblymember Rosenthal. And I've sent an unmute request. Okay, well, we will, we will come back shortly. The next, the next speakers, barring a speaker that we've skipped over coming back, are Cynthia Acevedo, Suzette Sunday, Amilda Mendez, and Denise Smith Allen. Cynthia Acevedo? I I don't see the name in the chat. If you're on in video, please wave your hand. Okay, we'll we'll come back to Cynthia Acevedo. Suzette Sunday. There we go. Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, I was getting a message saying I can't unmute myself. So now we know. Okay, hi.
No worries, we can hear you.
Good morning, everyone, or afternoon now. My name is Suzette, and I've been an Airbnb host for nearly 10 years. My comments are strictly with regard to the good actors, those hosts who are already registered with reputable short term booking companies such as Airbnb. We have extensive compliance with all local laws and regulations. We don't oppose, you know, limiting short term rentals and getting the bad actors out of the system. But I do truly feel we should be exempt from some of these stipulations that are put forth in this proposition. They are overreaching. I'd like to suggest a registry for our local elected officials who are taking money from hotel lobbyists and other special interest groups, and maybe a registry for those who have spoken on their behalf as shills at this hearing. We see you. Prior to becoming a host, I owned and managed brick and mortar retail stores for nearly 25 years. My last vintage store inhabited 2,000 square foot space with a DJ booth, a performance stage, a sewing room where I perform custom tailoring for my customers. The store was home to art installations, rock shows, karaoke nights. It was wildly fun, unique, immersive, and creative. In a word, it was vibrant. What happened to my last store is a story as old as the infrastructure of the city. The neighborhood demographic changed, and the bleach soaked sponge of gentrification left us with another Starbucks or Subway. Who cares? So I turned to Airbnb hosting to afford myself the opportunity to secure an apartment with enough space to another sewing studio. Really hard.
But Suzette, your your signal is weakening. May I suggest you turn off your video so we can have a clear audio stream at least? And if you wouldn't mind backing up in your comments? Suzette, we we can neither see nor hear you. Okay, we'll we'll come back and we'll let Miss, we'll let Suzette resume her comments. Hopefully, her her signal issue is well resolved. Oh, Suzette, you're let's get you back on unmute. Okay. So we'll move on from Suzette. We'll be sure to give her a chance to resume her comments when her technical issues resolve. The next speaker is Amilda Mendez.
Before we go, technical difficulties, where did you lose me, folks?
Okay, well, it looks like we don't have Amilda Mendez and and that Suzette is back. Suzette, I think it would be best so we can all hear your comments if you turn off your video.
Can't hear you for some reason. Oh, no.
Suzette, please turn off your camera. Okay, I'm trying to stop Suzette's video, maybe that'll help. Suzette, can you hear us?
I am so sorry. I can hear you now. Can you hear me okay?
I I can. Can you turn off your video so that we can have your your full bandwidth dedicated to your audio? So we can all hear your comments?
That's a great idea. I'm so sorry. Sure. I will do that.
Glad that it resolved. Go ahead.
Thank you. Where did I lose you?
I we we'd have to go back in the
Well, let me just, let me just off the cuff at this point, because, listen, I know that we're on a time. I don't want to take someone else's time. I I want to speak on behalf of people like myself who are just tenants. We're just normal working class New Yorkers who need Airbnb because we love the benefits. The benefits are I have insurance with Airbnb. If my tenant doesn't pay, Airbnb makes them pay. If my tenant gets hurt or damages my property, Airbnb make we shouldn't have to have and and okay, so I I have the freedom of choice. I can make my own schedule. There's so many benefits to having a good short term rental booking company. So the fact that it's being so vilified really offends my sensibilities. I'd also like to say that I think that this proposition as it's written is so vastly overreaching. To put someone on a registry almost makes them seem like a sex offender, doesn't it? And what it's going to do is it's going to force people like myself who just rent our apartments and rent out a room in our apartment short term once in a while to be on this registry. Our landlords are greedy landlords, let's face it, folks, most of them are. Will certainly take issue with that, will certainly not allow us to do it or force us to pay more rent for the privilege of being able to choose who is in our apartment and for how long they are in our apartment. This is just going to hurt people like myself who just have worked hard. I have 350 positive reviews. I'm a five star Airbnb host, super host. Yeah, that's that's basically what I want to say. I want the mayor's task force to basically. Okay, I'll just read this. The proposition as it's written and its sweeping scope is a vastly overreaching dictatorial proposition that threatens the vibrance of our communities and sets a dangerous precedence for involving government oversight into the most intimate and sensitive environments, the very places that we call home. This is fascism. My message to the mayor's task force, get out of my building, get out of my relationship with my landlord and my neighbors, get out of my private life and get the hell out of my home. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Amilda Mendez? I don't see the name. I do want to acknowledge it's a possibility that folks who signed up in advance signed up by phone and that I cannot tell that you're here. So if you if you signed up by phone, if you signed up and we skipped over you and you're here on a phone, please be sure to raise your hand so we can catch you on the on the back end. And the next speaker will be Denise Smith Allen. After Denise will be Vivian Abuelo, Amy Thrasher, Erin Watman, Timothy Chancy. Denise Smith, I have sent a request to unmute. Okay, perhaps Denise stepped away. So we'll come back. The next speaker is Vivian Abuela.
Thank you, Christian Klosner. Thank you for having this hearing. My name is Vivian Abuela. I'm with the West Side Neighborhood Alliance. Basically, I am a tenant in New York City for over 35 years. I'm not a property owner. I live and work here, I support local businesses, and I pay taxes. And yes, the rent is too high, but I feel like that's a separate issue. We need these rules. Basically, I've been battling the menace of illegal transient use in various homes since 2004. I feel like this issue has followed me around the city. And tenants should not have to police their own buildings to protect against illegal transient traffic. These rules simply will protect legal home sharing by providing a registry, register, become legal. It will protect tenants from being evicted for lease violations and co op owners. It will protect tourists from illegal operations. And it will protect housing by keeping current residential properties for residential use. That's all I need to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amy Thrasher.
Am I unmuted now?
You are unmuted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Amy. I am a retired nurse, and I've lived in New York City for 42 years, 32 of them here in Queens. I have a small house. with a one bedroom garden apartment below my unit that I rent out on Airbnb and that unit has never ever been on the rental market, never. After retiring, listing my house on Airbnb has allowed me to stay in this neighborhood that I very much love. My social security and pension does not cover my cost of living and without this income from the short term rental, I would not be able to pay my mortgage and I would lose my home. My guests come from around the world to spend their money in New York. They shop in our grocery stores, eat in our restaurants, go to our shops and use our transit system. New York City government should be celebrating short term renters, not trying to keep them out, but this new legislation threatens to do just that. One aspect of this bill that I would like to address is the limitation on the number of guests. I have a small house with three rooms on the ground floor, living room, bedroom, kitchen, of course, bath, which I customarily rent to traveling families. Why am I limited to two guests when hosts have no such restrictions? I rent to parents with children, adult children with their parents, but hotels have no restrictions. They can put four people in one room. Why can't I put four people in three rooms? My guests want a quiet place to relax, have breakfast in their pajamas, cook meals and have a home like environment, something they can't get at a hotel. I know the hotel industry is powerful and pushing for these laws, but the modern traveler wants what I have to offer. And if the hotels were smart, they would strive to offer the same. Compete with us. Don't crush us. These laws are arbitrary and devised to eliminate Airbnb from New York City, and that is very short sighted. Granted, Airbnb does not want to lose this market, but they're international. They will go on. These laws will not hurt Airbnb. They will hurt me and many others like me who are just trying to survive. We're not making millions in profits like the hotels. We're just trying to eke out a living. Mayor Adams has said that he supports small businesses. This is my small business and he and I would like him, I would like to call on him to not put me out of business. This will take away my livelihood and force me out of my home and out of New York City. If the city, if the New York City Council cares about our city's senior homeowners or the local economy, then they will fix this. There is still time to do what is right for real New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the next speaker is, the next speakers are Aaron Wattman, Timothy Chansey, Hans Krutchman and Donna Samuels Forbes. Is Aaron Wattman? Aaron, we're trying to unmute you. You can lower your raised hand and if you can come off mute, we've requested you to unmute. I see you there.
Okay, sorry, it wasn't going through.
We hear you now. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I mean, I don't, a lot of what I was going to say has already kind of been said, but you know, what I'll just say quickly is that, you know, we're not opposed to the registration law. I mean, do you think there should be some level oversight? But restricting all short term rentals in the city is just, is unrealistic and it's not sustainable. You know, I'm like, some of the other hosts said, I have a five star super host status with hundreds of reviews. We own a legal two family house in Brooklyn. We rent out one of our units and it's the people we rent to are their families. They're like grandparents visiting their kids who live in the neighborhood. You know, we also hosted some nurses during the pandemic for, you know, for free. We had a lot of families who are having their houses remodeled in the neighborhood and they need a place to stay for a few weeks. There's, there's a lot of things. Families are traveling from Europe and they need a place with a washer and dryer and they need a kitchen. And this is not like, you know, it's a real void in our community that we're filling. This is not, this is not something the hotels could address. And frankly, there aren't any hotels where we live. I mean, the nearest hotel is miles away. So it's, it's very short sighted to like try to put this one size fits all approach on everybody. I mean, I haven't heard any comments from anybody on here that had anything to say against responsible homeowners. It was just, you're going after people. You know, obviously like these LLC companies are buying multiple apartments and 30 unit buildings and renting them out. You know, doing it from out of state and letting guests throw parties and all that stuff. Yeah, I mean, have at it. You can go after those people. Find them. I mean, it seems like that's, that's the problem. They're giving everyone else a bad name. But, you know, I myself was targeted. Like again, we just rent one house to families, no parties, nothing like that. And I got, I got violations from the city. No warning. It came down. And it's just like, it's extremely unfair. I mean, we're, we're New Yorkers. We pay taxes. And it's like, we're being unfairly targeted. They just, I think they need to parse it out. They need to, this, this one size fits all approach is just, it's, it's it's not practical. So that's all I had to say. Like, you know, we pay taxes on this. I'll say that as well. And, you know, we're happy to register and pay a nominal fee and continue to pay taxes on this money. And, but it's just, you know, I don't think the city's thinking long term here. It's something that has to, has to give. So that's all I say.
Thank you. Before we go to the next speaker, I see there's a request to post a link to the rules. Again, if folks want to go to the OSE website at osnyc.gov. I'm sorry, nyc.gov/ose. On the on the registration tab, there is a, a link. And I'm going to try to post it quickly in the in the chat myself. Okay, I've just posted the chat. If you go to that page, the bottom link, read the hearing notice of proposed rules. That page also has a copy of the law. And elsewhere on the website, you can link to the various laws that I discussed at the beginning of my comments that regulate short term rentals. The next speaker is Timothy Chansey. I don't see Timothy on, if you're on my phone, I apologize. We'll be sure to get to you. Hans Krutchman. Hans, it looks like there's a Hans who's not muted. Okay, I see that we've been joined. Oh, Hans. Okay, go ahead. And then right afterwards, we'll go to Assembly Member Harvey Epstein, who I see has joined us. Hans, I, you're not muted, but we can't hear you. We, we still can't hear you. We can see you speaking, but no, no audio. Okay, cannot hear you. We still, we can still see your So Hans, I, you know, if you'll bear with us, why don't you take a moment and see if you can't get your microphone working. We'll go to the next speaker and come right back to you. If that's okay. Can you give me a thumbs up? Okay, great. Thank you. Assembly Member Epstein?
Thank you, and I appreciate you having this hearing and letting me join you today. My name is Harvey Epstein. I'm the Assembly Member representing the 74th District, includes neighborhoods of the Lower East Side, East Village, Peter Cooper Village, Thibson Town, Murray Hill, Tudor City and the United Nations. I mean, as I've been saying for years, there's proliferation of these sharing platforms over the last few decades. Many, you know, in New York and many states around the country. We, like other states, have enacted laws to ensure these short term rentals don't threaten the safety of residents when they're operating as illegal hotels or, or dangerously dividing apartments in our city. The risk here is that these units have been, these illegal hotels have been taking tens of thousands of units off the market. I want to applaud, obviously, because these modest regulations really set badly needed rules on the road for the industry valued at over $100 billion. Local Law 18 and the proposed regulations create basic protections for hosts, guests and create a framework that strikes a balance between those who want to rent out their accommodations legally and the city and the state who are responsible in keeping the residents safe and, and safe housing. Under the rules, hosts would have to seek OSE approval to register for the short term rentals. It's part of the application. They just need basic information. Units can't be registered. They have uncorrected code violations. It's really basic, simple things. The registration's got to be publicly posted and advertised that way. These are common sense rules. Provide previous absence from the safety level in the past. And these new regulations establish uncomplicated responsibilities and reporting requirements for the sharing platforms that ensure that these rentals are safety and law abiding. It's something that can be verified by OIC and, and, and are prohibited on, you know, what are prohibited buildings. Local Law 18 and the proposed regulations will help address some of these underlying housing crises we have. The short term rentals can take away from long term rent regulated housing. As I said before, cities identified over 60,000 rent stabilized units have been held vacant by landlords. Either it's warehousing or short term rentals really impact the over 60,000 homeless New Yorkers we have today. Enforcement and oversight should be made possible by these regulations. Who really deal with this law breaking? And I really want to applaud you for putting this forward.
I just saw that. I just did my, I did my, are you already walking here?
Yeah, we hear someone else. I applaud the adoption of these regulations. I just want to go back to the prior speaker and say, if there are regulations that you're obligated to follow.
Assembly Member, hold for a second. Let me find the person.
I think it's Aaron, Aaron Wattman, I think is unmuted. So yeah, now he's muted.
Okay, I've muted. I'm, I'm very sorry for the interruption.
That's right. No. And I just want you to speak to him and say, no one's trying to stop him from doing what he did. We just want to create rules and regulations that protect all of us and protect all the New Yorkers and stop all this illegal work. And I think that's exactly what you're doing. And I just really want to applaud your effort here today.
Thank you, Assembly Member.
Thank you.
So we'll go back to Hans. Hopefully, Hans, you've gotten your microphone working. No, that's okay. Maybe, maybe log out and log back in or try dialing in by the phone. If you wait one second, I will post the call in information for you. We'd very much like to hear what you have to say. In the meantime, Donna Samuels Ford. I don't I don't see Donna in the list. The next speaker will be Tom Kayler. One moment, Tom. We're unmuting you. Tom, we've sent a unmute request to you. You have to unmute also. Tom, we can't, I can see you speaking. We can't hear you. You have to unmute.
Unmute me.
Okay, there you go.
Very good. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say a couple of things in, in regards to Local Law 1822. To, to be very clear here, particularly for the platforms and the hosts, this law doesn't change any existing legislation that has to do with residential housing in New York State or in New York City. The multiple dwelling law of 1929 is what requires a host to be the primary leaseholder and to be on premise when they have a rumor and border. The multiple dwelling law is not being changed by this. It is a, that's a state law. It's not a city law. If you have problems with the multiple dwelling law, you have to go to Albany and change the law there. This law doesn't change the housing maintenance code, period, which is the law which the, the city of New York uses to regulate housing. It doesn't change the zoning laws. It doesn't change the fire code. The only thing that this law requires is that platforms and hosts comply with the existing state and city laws. That's the only thing that it does. Historically, back in 2015, on October 30th, there was a council meeting about raising the fines on illegal hotel use in New York City. The then council member, Jomani Williams, specifically asked repeatedly Mr. Christopher Lehane, who was the head of global operations for Airbnb, if Airbnb would comply with New York State and New York City laws. Mr. Lehane said, no, Airbnb would not comply with our state and city laws. If platforms, if hosts had been willing to comply with the existing laws, there would have been no reason to have this law passed and put into place. But the platforms refused. So along with San Francisco, Santa Monica, Chicago, Boston, multiple other cities in the US and throughout the world, the only way municipalities have been found to regulate this business and short term rentals is a business. It's not a roommate. It's not a shared space. It is a business of bringing people into homes for a very short period of time for the only purpose of making money. That's a business. So all of these cities now have set up regulatory systems because the platforms refused to follow their laws. So that's what New York City has been forced to do now, which means if you, as a host, have previously been renting rooms in your primary residence while you are on premise legally, then you'll still be renting legally. All this requires is that you register with the city, as is any other business in New York City. There is no business in New York City which is not regulated by the city, none. The lovely young woman around the corner who buffs my nails once a month, she has a license and she cannot buff my nails without a license. So that's all this bill does. This bill hasn't changed any laws in the state or in the city. It only requires compliance with the laws. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Hans, is your is your microphone working? On my end, you appear to be unmuted, Hans. I did put in the chat for anyone not having luck with audio, I put the instructions. It's quite a ways back in the chat now for how to call in by phone. Hans, perhaps you can call in directly to give us your comment. If we can't resolve your microphone, please send an email to oserules@cityhall.nyc.gov. My WebEx has been taken over by Cynthia Acevedo's whiteboard. Cynthia Acevedo is one of Cynthia Acevedo is one of the speakers that we moved past. Cynthia, do you, are you ready to provide your comments? That's very strange. I don't see Cynthia Acevedo in the list, even though the whiteboard just took over my screen. We've been monitoring for other folks that we've skipped over. We don't see them in the in the list. And so we will now move into the folks who have raised their hands. I'm continuing to get a whiteboard pop up. I don't know if everybody else is seeing this. I'm going to close it for all. Miss Cynthia, if you are available, please let us know in the chat and we will unmute you to make your comment. And the the speakers with hands raised, I'm going to go, I'm going to read through all of them in order, just so you, if you have your hand raised. You've you've been patiently waiting for your turn. Thank you for waiting. The folks that we have are Amy Cheyenne, KL, Ilan Rabinovich, Yurdi Lanfranco, Han Summers, Damon Bolden, Dave Summers, EC, Faisal Hadenuka, Ingrid John Mudd, Kyriakos B., Margaret Moore Roberts, Ryan K., Sarah Lynn, phone number nine one seven two asterisk 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 six six. So we'll start with Amy. After you have provided your comments, if you could, please take down your hand so we can make sure that we catch everybody who wants to speak. It seems like Amy has dropped out, who had raised her hand. We'll circle back at the end. Cheyenne. Cheyenne, we can, we can see you. You appear unmuted on our end. I've just sent another request to unmute.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Paul. Good afternoon, everyone. Let me get my notes up. Sorry. I'm a born and raised New Yorker from Brooklyn, first generation black homeowner. I started being an Airbnb host five years ago and it has changed my life. It has allowed allowed me to do much needed repairs. I have a space for my family to stay when they visit. It has allowed me to stay home with my kids and I'm also pregnant at this moment. It was always an understanding that it was okay to use Airbnb in your own home as long as the host was present. Even in the case of Carol Stanley versus the City of New York, the judge ordered the city to leave the poor man alone. Even Clausen stated in September, in September of twenty twenty-two, someone who was living in their own home occasionally renting it out a few times a year and doing it in a way they aren't driving the neighbor crazy is not our priority. We have bigger fish to fry. I have no complaints. My neighbors know me and love me since I was a little child. They have no issue and I respect my neighborhood. This is my home. And my guests respect us and support local businesses. Zoning laws, building code. There are thousands of New Yorkers not following building code. Safety issue. What is the difference from a safety standpoint of a thirty day night stay versus a twenty-eight night stay? How many New Yorkers live in illegal basement units that were flooded by Sandy and Ida? How many New Yorkers have more than the legal occupants in an apartment? The only hotels in my area are those being built as de facto shelters. There is no hotels nearby. Senator Jabari brings up a point about Santa Monica law, but that law is even less stringent than New York City proposed law. It allows home share in a guest house, doesn't have a two person cap, only per bedroom, which makes sense. You should have two people in the bedroom. That makes perfect sense. Not a two person cap. Doesn't have a lock on the door rule. Furthermore, our housing markets are completely different and should not be compared as they refuse to address their zoning laws, lack of building and low level housing. We have buildings that fall under M D L law, the multiple dwelling law, that the city can go after renting out full apartments. Literally taking apartments meant for long term renting from the from the market. Our homes are not, my primary homes are not mandatory long term renting spaces. I'm not taking away housing from the market. It's my home. I use my, for my family use every few months. When my ninety year old grandfather comes back to the U.S., he stays in the unit. I would never have a long term tenant in my home because of this. Airbnb allowed me to make income while still having the space available for my father and other family members to visit. During the pandemic, I hosted traveling nurses and eleven ninety-nine S E I U workers that needed a place to stay to to separate from their family members due to COVID. I have hosted refugees. The city needed Airbnb during the most troubling times when hotels shut down en masse and refused to open up. Why is the city punishing small homeowners just trying to get by? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see Cynthia Acevedo on screen. I, unfortunately, I do not see Cynthia in my participant list. I'll ask one of my co-hosts to request her to unmute. Oh, we can't hear you yet, Cynthia. Cynthia, it does, it appears to me on our end that you are not muted. But we, we can't hear you. I'm not sure. Cynthia, how to how to get you, how to get your sound on. I, you're, you're not muted on our end. I guess maybe maybe try logging out and logging back in. We definitely want to hear what you have to say. I appreciate that you took the time to sign up in advance. I'll move on, but we'll, we'll come back to, hopefully we can get your sound going. The next speaker is KL.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we can hear you.
Okay. I want to open by saying that holding hearings like this at ten thirty A.M. on a Monday is strategic and designed to convenience city employees while silencing the working class. Since this hearing is attended by members of the O S E during their working hours, while the rest of us have to carve out time during the regular working day to attend. There are plenty of examples of New York City based public hearings that occur in the evening and this department should reconsider when it holds these meetings. Secondly, I would like to encourage any opponents of this law to not waste time trying to convince this department or any department under this mayoral administration to not pass this legislation. They will definitely pass this legislation. And if you don't believe me, consider that on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, a man stood in front of an audience and said, I never forget my first. You are my love. My first, my love. It sounds so intimate, so romantic. Who was this man? Who was he speaking to? That was Mayor Eric Adams, speaking to the Hotel Trades Council Union. Someone who openly declares that level of adoration for the hotel industry is not someone committed to protecting us. And speaking of romance, on the one year anniversary of that speech, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, three men showed up to my house. I was completely alone and scared that three men were demanding house entry. I didn't allow them to come inside, so they parted with a little threat for me. I would later discover that this was the Office of Special Enforcement. What happened to me happened just because I consented to Airbnb data sharing regulations. And the Office of Special Enforcement used that data to locate my address. Now imagine as a host what this law means for you. So in reading public comments left by our friends, I want to say, Denise, save your comment. They don't care that you're disabled and that you need this income. Mike Harp, don't bring up your children. They don't care. No need to leave public comments that this law protects the rich. They know. That's why they're going to pass it. And since I'm absolutely convinced that this legislation will pass and based on what my previous, what the previous speakers have stated, that it will pass under the guise of protecting the city's housing stock. Guys, these politicians, they just want to protect affordable housing. They really care about the homelessness epidemic in this country. That's why Mayor Eric Adams authorized the dismantling of homeless encampments. Except, the number of housing units that need to be built to address our projected population is five hundred and sixty thousand by twenty thirty, according to the A K R F. Are there five hundred and sixty thousand New York City based Airbnb listings? No. So the mayor of the city and the assembly members who gathered here today, the people with the most political power, somehow can't find any way to build these additional five hundred and sixty thousand units and have to crack down on short term rental hosts and mostly low income ones because there's only one prominent case of an actual corporation being penalized. Mr. Mom Donnie says that removing short term rentals is going to help the housing crisis by making these apartments available for long term rental. Mr. Mom Donnie, do you have actual data to back this up? Mr. Mom Donnie, I know a thing or two about the housing crisis and as a Greek American, I know a thing or two about Astoria. Not only did I spend six years volunteering at homeless shelters, I was a victim of the two thousand eight housing crisis myself. My most vivid childhood memories are the foreclosure notices coming to my house and my dad showing them to me and telling me we were going to live under a bridge. That was before Airbnb existed as a company. Because hosts will have to register, I want every host to know what you are registering for. You are registering to be visited in person by this department, just like I was. And they come in groups that outnumber you. They knew I lived there. They saw me twice. So I don't want anyone to feel confident that because you believe you are complying with the current already strict laws that you are safe. Tom Kaler said this law is required for regulations, including fire safety regulations. Tom, do you know what happens if inspectors enter and they don't find a fire sprinkler system or any other ultra specific building code? My family was fined ten thousand dollars. The inspectors saw and photographed the premises, which had three fire extinguishers, three carbon monoxide detectors, two smoke detectors for a two thousand square foot home. With all of these fire extinguishers, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, is this two thousand square foot home New York City's number one fire safety threat? The inspectors don't care about fire safety. They want this database of registered short term rentals to come and find you and generate revenue. And if you don't believe me, take a look at the documents that the city has actually published on this law. All right, I just want to wrap up. I'm sorry that I've taken the three minute mark. I would strongly encourage everyone here, if you do continue to host, I have actually been bullied out of it, to be constantly home twenty-four hours a day, never leave, because after you register, you never know when these individuals can show up and make the claim that the permanent resident was not present. Because they came to my house once and I was there. They came twice and I was there. And the third time, they came strategically, just like this hearing, early in the morning, I happened to not be there and they did make that claim. They saw me the other two times. And by the way, no one has brought this up, so let me just openly state it to conclude. With the very strict interpretation of the current already strict laws, some of us will be subjected to sexual harassment and sexual misconduct. What do I mean by that? Let me give you a very real example. Out of the hundreds of people my family has hosted, rarely but every so often, and I know other hosts know what I'm talking about, someone is clearly coming over because your accommodation was cheaper than a hotel and they really just want a space to be intimate. Some of us don't want to be around when strangers we don't know are engaging in that type of very private behavior, so we may leave. You can't predict with a hundred percent certainty that someone booking isn't doing that, even if you're very careful. It's just the nature of the hospitality industry. So if we can't even step out for one or two hours if that is occurring, because I only stepped out for a few hours when the inspectors came the third time, then this department is even more disgusting than I previously thought. And then there are some safety situations. Not every guest, most of them are, but not every guest is a safe one to be around. So ask yourselves, which one is it? Is this law protecting the housing sector or are you protecting the hotel industry? The speakers today brought up housing, but Nikki Franzita spoke, the Vice President of the Hotel Association of New York. She said it openly, unashamed. She is in full support of this law because the hotel industry is, quote, suffering. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ilan Rabinovich.
Hi, Ilan Rabinovich here. I'm a resident of the Upper West Side. I live in my home that I rent extra rooms in in order to cover, you know, honestly to offset the high property taxes that I pay here. I've owned homes in other states before I moved to New York. Property taxes were never this high anywhere I've been. So if you're looking to raise revenue, maybe do it through the existing, through the existing taxes you already put on me. Maybe do it through the existing fines you put on me. This morning, a homeless person dropped a bottle on my, on my doorstep. I got the fine because, from the transportation department, because I didn't wake up before nine A.M. to get rid of the bottle that he left on my doorstep. The city is just constantly looking for ways to get in the way of small homeowners actually making, actually living in their homes here. If you were worried about homeownership or residency here, you'd be looking at solving those problems. If you were worried about home, about people being able to live in their apartments and, you know, high rent being an issue for them, well, then you would also be looking for ways to them create, to create revenue streams so that they can continue to pay their rent. If you were looking to create more homes like the five hundred thousand or so that KL spoke of, I don't know if that number is accurate or not, not, not my area of expertise. You're not going to find it in Airbnbs. The numbers that you, that the senators Homan and Brisport talked about earlier about how there's more Airbnb rentals out there than there are long term residences, it's apples and oranges. People are obviously putting their extra rooms out on the market. They're not, they're, they're, these are not rooms that would suddenly become part of the housing stock just because you shut down our properties on Airbnb or booking.com or V R B O or elsewhere. Some, some of the other speakers have said that the sites won't self enforce. That's incorrect. If I try to list my, my, my extra bedrooms on a number of different sites, they'll say, no, you're not, you, if, if, they'll only allow me to do so if I offer them for more than thirty days. Again, all of this does not make sense and it seems to be ill informed. I grew up in L.A. I grew up in Santa Monica. The housing industry there is very different than the one here in New York. You can't just copy paste their laws and bring them here. And as others have mentioned, they're significantly less strict than what you're proposing here. If I read the law correctly, because I live in a Class C building, which is not part of this new Class B dwelling that you've proposed as part of law eighteen, I suddenly won't even be able to rent out my guest rooms. So Mr., you know, so Tom Kaler, who spoke earlier and said, no regulations are changing, I don't actually think that's correct. I think you need to go back and read the law. I, I think it's telling that none of the politicians that represent me stayed more than thirty seconds past their own statements. And in fact, when, in many cases, they didn't even show up for their spot. They showed up hours late and then left again immediately after. Ms. Brewer, where, where are you? How are you going to know what I think is your constituent if you didn't actually hang around to hear my testimony? How are you going to know what I think is your constituent if you don't actually answer the emails or letters or faxes that I send you? Why are you still in office after twenty years? Let somebody from the new generation that actually knows how the internet works, actually knows how any of these technologies work, regulate them instead of yourself. I, you know, the fact that half the people on this call haven't been able to get their WebEx to work shows that they're probably not the right people to be regulating the internet industry. But let's throw the internet out of this. Short term rentals have been around for how long? But let's throw the internet out of this. Short-term rentals have been around for how long? Like, I assure you, they've been around in New York as a whole and in New York City as a whole for quite some time. We've just made it more obvious that we're doing it by putting it on the internet. So now you have the data to see that we're not screwing over residents here. So I don't have a problem with the legislation. I would prefer that you don't keep putting my information publicly on the internet. But that's fine. I'm a fairly public person. You can Google me. You can see I work for public companies. You can see I give public talks. You can see what I do. That's fine. I gave up my privacy years ago, but lots of other people have it. My problem isn't with the registration system. My problem is with how the registration system will be abused, and my problem is that with the restrictions that are in place that are going to prevent me from actually being able to use my home that I paid for. It took me a lot of years to save up to buy my property. And honestly, I lose money on my property every month because of ridiculous regulations from the city. No longer you talk about me getting landlords that are kicking people out and keeping places vacant? Nobody wants to do that. Maybe they're kicking people out, maybe they're keeping things vacant because it would actually cost them more to rent out their homes or rent out their units, then the city will let them charge because of your rent control or rent stabilization laws that make it really hard to make money as a small-time landlord. These are all things you should consider. Solve the actual problem. Don't try to solve Airbnb, or Booking.com, or VRBO, or any other sites. I think the fact that you keep targeting Airbnb specifically also shows that you seem to have some sort of vendetta against one specific site, despite the fact that actually, many of my, many of the folks that stay with me come from lots of different sites, not just Airbnb. So with that, I'm sort of yammering on, so I'm going to stop. I have no expectation that you'll respond to any of these comments either here or elsewhere. I have no expectation that my elected officials will actually try to represent me here. And I expect that I'll probably just take this housing off the market in January, whenever your laws happen, and they'll go to the hotel industry. And you'll actually, the housing stock you will have lost is tourist housing stock, not residential housing stock. So, good luck, and I look forward to wasting the next four hours as we listen to politicians talk about how they're helping the people.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yirdi Lanfranco.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. I'm really, really honored to be here today. I am a super host. I'm having a super host for the last five years. I own my home, which is a townhouse in the Bronx, in the area of Riverdale. And I also own my mom's residence that is in the area of Wakefield. The reason why I host in Airbnb is because I am putting available housing for people that are coming to New York, especially those people that are coming with pets. My house, we welcome people with pets, people that otherwise wouldn't be able to stay in other places, and we feel that we are helping the economy through that. I'm an economist. I have two master's degrees in economics and business analytics. And after hearing a lot of those people speak today, I am more than certain that these laws are not meant to help the average New Yorker like me, someone that was embracing the city and that has gotten the opportunity to progress and evolve and be able to afford my home. I would not be able to afford my two mortgages and allow my mother to live in a nice and more safe neighborhood if it wasn't for Airbnb. We do rent to people that are coming from other places with families, like I mentioned, with pets and others. And I do highly believe that I am servicing the economy of New York City by putting my units to service. If it wasn't for those units, those people would not be able to come, because they come with pets and with other limitations, and they would not be able to come and spend money. On top of that, I do want to add that I do pay taxes. So every year when I file my taxes, I come with my printout from Airbnb, and that is included in my tax bill. So, not only do I have my full-time job as an economist, but I also help the economy of New York with additional taxes. So all we are trying to do here is motivate the economy, motivate spending, allow those people in New York City to stay in business. My small businesses around my neighborhood that otherwise wouldn't have, you know, these people visiting if it wasn't for the people that are coming through Airbnb, not the average, you know, visitor won't come to Riverdale or to the Bronx, right? Like, what would people be in New York, in this area for if it wasn't for Airbnb? So what I'm doing actually is maintaining small-business owners around my neighborhood alive, because now we are able to put people, tourist people, in the area as well. So that's an additional layer on top of the fact of the things that I just mentioned before. Lastly, I just want to thank all the hard-working New Yorkers that have taken the time to show up to this meeting, to express themselves. People like Amy, who is retired, who is able to afford living in New York because she's able to rent a room otherwise not going to be available for long-term renters. So, I wanted to also bring a point here on facts, because as an economist and a mathematician, I like to be driven by facts, not feelings. 39,881 houses are listed in Airbnb. From those, only 57.1% are entire homes or apartments, 57.1%. The other 41% are private rooms. Do you think people are going to be renting private rooms to average New Yorkers just to live inside their house, long-term? No, right? They're not going to be able to do that. On top of that, if they do so, they're not going to be paying taxes on it. They're going to do illegally by putting people in their private rooms without telling anyone, especially not the government. So I would say, if the law enforcers are so concerned with New Yorkers and our livelihoods, why don't you provide us more means of income? Why don't you provide us more ways for us to increase our incomes and our livelihoods and be able to afford our homes and decent lives? I sent my son to private school because I'm able to afford it because I do Airbnb. Without it, I won't be able to afford having my son in a Catholic school and allowing him to get, you know, the education that I think I want to give him. So thank you for your time, and I do hope that at least someone is listening and is not falling into deaf ears. I'm taking three hours outside of my job to actually come to this meeting. So I do appreciate Ms. Gail, if you take the time to listen to the people of New York besides just going to these fundraiser dinners and private events that are keeping you in office for 20 years, which I think is way too long. So thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal. Okay, we can hear you, Assemblymember.
Yes, you can hear me?
Yes. We could, and somehow you muted. You're muted again. We've sent through another.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm Assemblymember Lyndby Rosenthal. I represent the Upper West Side, parts of Hell's Kitchen in the Assembly. I'd like to thank Christian Clausner, the executive director of the Mayor's Office of Special Enforcement, for the opportunity to comment on Local Law 18, the law which the council passed in '21, and which will go into effect in January, January 10 of 2023, will aid the efforts to regulate the illegal short-term rental market in New York City and will, will make for a smoother functioning of that system. I've worked with Mr. Clausner for years now, mostly on Airbnb, but other home-sharing platforms that have vastly contributed to our loss of affordable and regulated units here in New York City, have turned, across the world, have turned parts of cities into tourist traps, not genuine locations where genuine residents live, because they're now all Airbnb and other home-sharing platforms' locations. Since 2007, I've been working on the Airbnb issue and the proliferation of illegal hotels across the five boroughs, especially within my own district here on the Upper West Side. New York's multiple-dwelling law prohibits short-term rentals in buildings with three or more units for less than 30 days. However, the short-term rental market is lucrative, and as a result, third-party sites and even some landlords have flagrantly skirted state law to create record-breaking profits for themselves. These efforts have helped to deplete the city's existing affordable housing stock while raising rents on everyday New Yorkers and interfering with a tenant's right to warranty of habitability, which means peaceful enjoyment of their unit without tourists tromping through their building at all hours of the day and night. Long before short-term rentals became an international issue, I rented a unit for a couple of nights in a nearby building where the owner insisted he wasn't doing that. Well, I proved by being able to reserve, this was through Booking.com, I believe, or maybe it was Expedia, that you could actually rent a room for a night or two, even though that was illegal. Some years ago, I organized a sting, an Airbnb sting, using the platform. I booked four different units for one-night stays within Manhattan. These were units that had at one time been someone's apartment. Now, they were somebody's place to stay for a night or two. You know, it was a bedroom, a kitchen, a bathroom, a living room, no personal items. So when I went there, I was instructed to tell neighbors and building staff that I was a family member, not a tourist, and not to answer questions. When I spoke to the broker, he said, "You know, if you want to stay longer, I have so many other units, but it's booked for tomorrow, so you can't stay more than one night." Okay, this was in a rental building where there were other tenants who told me that the elevators were never available for them because they were going up and down with tourists checking in and checking out. This is not what you sign up for when you sign a lease. When you sign a lease, you sign up for a building where you are guaranteed that you have access to the facilities in the building for you as a tenant, as a renter, not for tourists. In 2016, I authored the bill that became law in the state which prohibits online advertising of illegal rentals, of illegal short-term rentals. Almost overnight, sites were scrubbed of illegal units, proving that home-sharing sites, despite foot-dragging, are capable of transparency and regulation. Now, our laws must keep pace with technology. I'm glad New York City has decided to build on successful efforts to curb illegal hotels while also protecting those who use third-party platforms to rent their units. If you rent a room within your apartment on a short-term basis and are present during the rental period, you'll be able to continue doing this. And no, you don't have to be there 24 hours a day. The amount of hyperbole is kind of astonishing here. After years of gaming the system and putting profit above housing across the world for profits, no one, no one who engages in this first thinks of, "What am I doing to the city's affordable housing stock at all?" So once again, Airbnb is trying to muddy the waters with fake news by scaring everyday New Yorkers who legally rent their units into believing that a basic registration system is too cumbersome and intrusive. From Singapore to Jersey City to Paris, France, to Atlanta, Georgia, cities both big and small across the world are working to preserve and protect their housing stock from further decimation by third-party sites. Airbnb is working overtime to insulate its bottom line from local and state laws that aim to reel in its illegal activity. A registration system, which is the sole purpose, the sole goal of Local Law 18, has been employed by other cities such as Santa Monica and Boston. So regulating home-sharing platforms to root out bad actors and encourage transparency is critical to preserving the city's affordable housing stock, as well as the interests of those who legally use the platform. Implementing a registration system will prevent certain people from emptying their buildings in return for a quick profitable buck. I know our collective work on this issue is far from over. However, the city implementing Local Law 18 will help to reduce the number of illegal short-term rentals across the city. I look forward to working with OSC and anyone else who's interested on rolling out this important measure. My staff has been on this webinar and listening to every statement that everyone who testifies makes. So you don't need to see my face to know that we are listening. We are taking notes, as most elected officials do, especially when they have 25 issues to deal with. Perhaps today, 25 different issues. We are monitoring, we are listening, and we are hearing everyone. And we are doing what we think is best to protect the city and its stock of affordable housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Assemblymember. The next speaker is An S.
Yes, hi.
Hi, we can hear you.
Yes, okay, hi. So we're a family of five in Brooklyn. We own our small building. My husband and I live here with our three children. And we have a unit that our parents and families use when they come to visit. When they're not using it, we rent it out. You know, it offers a cleaning job to a working mom of four. It provides housing for our neighbors' relatives who visit our neighborhood, because it doesn't have many hotels available. It offers a place for our neighbors who may be temporarily displaced from their apartments, and they need a place to stay close to their kids' schools. We aren't against registering or following regulations to make sure the occupants are safe. We just don't want to be penalized for the bad business behaviors of larger buildings. Thanks.
Thank you. The next, I'm going to read the names of the next several speakers, so folks can be ready. Damon Bolden will be next, then Dave Summers, EC, and then Faisal Adenuga. Is Damon Bolden available?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thanks so much. So I have three quick points to make. So Local Law 18, I don't know if I'm for it or not, because I'm hearing a lot of different things. And so my suggestion would be to provide more information about exactly what that law entails, what registration means, and just being more transparent with how to go about it. Like, I have no idea if my Airbnb is legal or not. It was before, but will it still be legal? The second thing is that for, you're grouping everybody together. Me, as a homeowner, my issues are very different than someone who's renting an apartment or renting a home and trying to be a host on Airbnb. So I think that if you broke things out in different parameters for different situations, that might help. Because again, as a homeowner, I don't have the same issues that someone who's in a building and being a renter who has an apartment that they have. And then the other thing that I'd like to address is the shortage, housing shortage, please don't blame homeowners for the housing shortage. You need to talk to and blame the developers that move into these neighborhoods. I live, in my neighborhood, there are five apartment buildings that have been built, and I guarantee you that none of them, none of them provide affordable housing. There's an apartment building very near me. It's a small unit, I mean, it's a small apartment building. They're renting a one-bedroom for $3,000, and this is in Brooklyn. And the last thing that I'd like to say is, for proponents of this bill, how many of you have gone to or come to Bushwick for dinner or to shop? How many of you have come to Bed-Stuy for dinner? You know, Airbnb has helped my neighborhood, helped the economy of my neighborhood, and helped people to not be so scared of Bed-Stuy or to not be so scared of Bushwick. And I'm just afraid that if you do this, you make it harder for people to do the home-sharing, that people will just come to New York City and think that New York City is just Manhattan. And I don't have anything against Manhattanites. I used to be one myself. But, New York City is more than just Manhattan. You know, we have families that come from all over the world. And when they talk about, when they ask about neighborhoods and stuff, I tell them- And when they talk about, when they ask about neighborhoods and stuff, I tell them, I share with them, yeah, neighborhoods have issues, but then we have a lot of really great things in a lot of the neighborhoods that are not advertised in Rough Guide or in Lonely Planet. So that's what I have to say. That's what I have to add, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I, I received a comment, a request from one of the speakers who spent an awful morning and has to leave at 1:30. I, my, my sense from attendees at the hearing is that I probably ought to accommodate the request. I don't know whether the speaker is, what their position is. But I, I hope all will indulge my exercise of judgment in letting this next person go instead of missing out on his chance to speak. We'll go to Ryan K. Hey, I apologize to everybody for, for taking a speaker out of order.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. I have taken all morning off from work like many of us. So I just wanted to be able to chat before I have to hop on another call. I'm speaking as a small business owner in Williamsburg who employs seven New Yorkers and as somebody who owns a private one-to-two-family dwelling. I think the biggest issue here is that there's a clear disconnect between those of us on this call who are small, small building owners and those who are doing room sharing or trying to rent in a bigger building or corporate landlords exploiting long-term rentals as well as tenants violating the terms of their leases. These are separate issues and it seems like the politicians and representatives on this call haven't really seen the distinction or the nuance between the two different issues. The small-term, the short-term rental housing issue for multiple, for family, sorry, built smaller buildings with one-to-two units needs to be addressed in a separate way. I think that the politicians who are, as another speaker had mentioned, not on this call anymore, really need to be informed of this and need to understand that. I live in my building, in my apartment. I travel quite extensively for work due to the nature of my business. It's key for me that I supplement my income in order to pay that mortgage that I have on my house. To do this, I rent out my apartment when I'm not home. To be clear, this is my house. I own it and I work hand-in-hand with anyone staying in my apartment, whether a friend or somebody from a short-term rental platform to make sure that they're comfortable in my apartment. I leave explicit instructions about the house with full safety information. This is the same as if it was a friend staying in my apartment or somebody that is paying for me. It's clear, as I mentioned before, that the politicians that are writing these laws don't understand the nuance and are not using the platforms. One of the early representatives has mentioned that they are one of the few people on the planet who do not use this, which feels like a the wrong way to approach this. People need to understand what they are writing regulations on and how to regulate for that. We need to create a right, a fair playing field for everybody. We need to find a balance between the owners of the units and the city and the regulations that are being written. I believe that we need a smart and usable regi- registration system. I would be happy to be involved in that. That is the key issue, and we need to find a way to do that for people who, again, in my situation, have a one-to-two family home. Just to touch on a few of these points and then I'll wrap up. There's almost no statistical evidence that housing prices increases are due to short-term rentals. People look at short-term rentals as a scapegoat, but have little data to back it up any more than a statistically insignificant 1% increase. Inflation and housing costs have risen, risen, risen in general across the country and the world, as have a number of other items like food, transportation, clothing, and anything else. And we need to create a small, a clear distinction between professional companies and, and small actors. And we need to find a place that allows for short-term rentals as well as long-term rentals. If I do leave, there's very little difference between somebody staying at my place for 35 days or 40 days than somebody who's staying for one or two weeks if I need to leave town. I would like to play to pay tax. I do pay tax on the rental income. I would like to do that through a platform, and we should make sure that this is happening and that New York City is encouraging this and not discouraging this. I believe in the past, platforms like Airbnb have tried to do this and politicians have turned that down. Like many others, I pump an immense amount of money into the local economy. I provide a house guide of local businesses, and almost everyone that stays in my place thanks me for the list. They spend money in stores, coffee shops, grocery shops, restaurants, and services in the neighborhood. People that stay with me are mostly families, guests visiting loved ones, generally after the birth of a child or for a funeral, or those finding long-term housing, researching their future life in New York. I have a very different apartment than a 60-story hotel building. I don't need to have sprinklers or multiple exits. Everybody knows how to get in and out of the building. They've come in the front door. That is how they enter the building. That's how they can leave it. I think Santa Monica is not something to bring up. It's a completely different analogy. The average cost there for a house is $1.8 million. LA did something very smart, which is that they wrote their own laws separate from Santa Monica, which allowed a certain number of housing nights per year for short-term rental owners that own their own building. And they did not follow that regulation in Santa Monica, which is burdensome and not applicable here. And my last note is just on progress. As others mentioned, people want to stay in apartments near family, friends, and everything they are attending. Hotels still exist, and in quarter one of 2022, hotels in Manhattan were at over 80% occupancy with an average of $350. They're doing fine. So well, they paid a lobbyist to come on here for them. People traveling often want to be able to cook and have an experience of being a New Yorker. Let's do that and find a way to make sure that we embrace the transition from the typewriter to the computer instead of just closing the door on progress. Christian, thank you for organizing this. You've done a great job, and I appreciate the, the speaking time.
Thank you. And I can tell from the comments and the video that folks seem not to have mined that Ryan spoke out of turn. I appreciate everyone's indulgence. The next speaker is Dave Summers. After Dave, we'll have EC and Faisal Adenuga. Go ahead, Dave. We can hear you. Dave Summers?
Yep, hi, Christian. Thanks for the, thanks for having me host this forum. I'm getting already a chance to speak. So I'm Airbnb host. Yeah, can you, can you guys hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Okay, thanks. All right. So I'm a host in Brooklyn, been for the past five years or so, not in support of the Local Law 18 as written, and I think it needs to be amended before it should be adopted. So just to clarify, I, I am in support of the, the registration requirement. I think it's a good idea. And that'll help to differentiate between individual homeowners that are just trying to make ends meet with large rental businesses and corporate landlords who are kind of taking advantage of a loophole with multiple listings. Individuals, you know, that, that own a single listing and an owner by building should use property to, you know, rent to whoever they see fit. And that's very different from, you know, large-scale corporations that are taking a lot of housing stock out of the New York City supply. Those should not be allowed, and registration would definitely help to curtail that activity. The whole point about rent slave stabilized apartments, of course, they need to be protected. Entire rental buildings shouldn't be turned into hotels. That needs to be curtailed. Nobody would disagree with that. And the claims about, you know, short-term rentals being dangerous or not up to building codes, that's conjecture. That's not, that's not really fair. My home is safe enough for my family. And any family that comes to visit us, you know, they're safe in that, in that environment. Benefits of these, these rental platforms is that, you know, they're community-based, they're review-driven, they're transparent. Visitors can see individualized written feedback about the listings that they are choosing to visit. And they should feel comfortable that they're, they're getting into a safe and suitable place where they'll, they'll be comfortable while they're visiting our neighborhoods. We have a lot of visitors that need multiple bedrooms, visiting with families. That would not be affordable if they had to rent multiple hotel rooms. It's not realistic. Visitors want kitchens. They're not available in hotel rooms generally. Forcing, you know, prospective visitors to only be able to rent hotel rooms would be, would have a negative impact on tourism or sea overall. It would hurt local businesses, and many of those operate in neighborhoods that don't have adequate hotel supply. They're visiting doctors and nurses on rotation, professionals visiting the city for a couple of days or weeks. They need affordable and comfortable housing, which hotels really don't accommodate. Certain aspects of the, the proposed rule really reasonable. They don't make sense. Having keyed locks on all internal doors, like limiting that really isn't realistic. Hotels are obviously not so. The rules just really need to differentiate between individual homeowners that are trying to make ends meet from large-scale businesses that are operating multiple listings. And the registration requirement will, will help to sort that out. So I think it just needs to be amended and changed. But it, it should not be implemented in its current form. So I'd urge the city to, you know, please consider changes before implementing any kind of, any kind of restrictions and not penalize the individual homeowners that are really just trying to make ends meet and stay in the city. Thanks a lot for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next speaker is, and, and thank you, Dave, for letting Ryan go first. The next speaker is EC.
Hi, good afternoon, all. Thank you for organizing and thank you for allowing us to have a forum to speak in. This, this law goes against most of our civil rights. Our, our communities are being targeted. Our communities are being, we are, we are all being forcibly removed from housing stock. You complain about, or bemoan rather, about housing stock being eliminated, but the, you're, you're actually eliminating the people who provide the housing. Two people. Small businesses aren't told how many customers they can serve per day. Even a restaurant has 12 to 13 turnovers. Nobody tells a restaurant, yes, you're not allowed to have 14 setups. You are allowed to host as many people as you can fit and how safely you can fit them. I'm not going over any fire codes. My building has been safe and stood in Brooklyn since 1929. My family is the third owner of this building. This isn't taking away affordable housing. Brooklyn, where I am, hasn't been affordable in years. Do no part of my own, or anybody else does. But it's not affordable. And if I want to stay here, what shall I do? I open up my house the same way my parents did. I host colleagues. I host international students, travelers, med students. I, like everybody else, do supply money to all my local businesses, recommend all these shops. But where does Grandma Moses come stay when she wants to go visit her grandkids? At the Holiday Inn? That's 40 blocks away? When she has a walker or a wheelchair? How does she get to see her grandkids? I wish more renters would speak up and speak about what Airbnb means to them, because I certainly have this discussion with them. But like, what I think is going on is that this is actually going to ban Airbnbs. It makes most of the things that we do and have been told were legal, it invalidates all of that. A building in New York City can have four different class specifications. Which one does this belong to? I feel that with change does come great responsibility. And I'm not opposed to having another website of where I need to legislate myself and register myself. What we are all asking for is non-Draconian measures that will actually allow us to do so, not cost-prohibitive solutions of $100,000 fire suppression system, of which my tenants for 45 years have never needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Faisal Adenuga. After that will be Ingrid Johnmudd and Kiryakos B.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon. My name is Faisal Adenuga. I'm a short-term rental host here in New York, and I would just like to say that I'm in direct opposition of Local Law 18. And it's a clear attempt that of corruption by our senators and political officials to flatter the ideals of the hotel monopolies and the luxury apartment housing developers. I'm a university student who became a host to utilize my, my family's home that I grew up in to supplement our income to stay in the city that I grew up in and aid my disabled mother along with paying my tuition and these things. I've hosted plenty of people like that of travel, traveling medical personnel and the disabled who could not find hotels in the city that cater to their needs or the needs of their special-needs animals. Implementing Local Law 18 does not affect the true bad actors like that of the LLCs and individuals who own an exorbitant amount of rental units, but only affect small homeowners of one-to-two-family homes, such as me and my mother, who are all like doing their best to survive in this recession, all while using the home that we live in for Airbnb. This law is like an absolute detriment to local landlords and provides no indicative evidence as to why anyone would want to put their homes back onto the market when we've seen how the city treats homeowners in regards to squatting and tenant evasion of rent payment. And we've seen this during the pandemic where homeowners were, just had to find a way to pay their mortgage all while tenants were able to not pay rent. And the city didn't have an answer to that. They wanted us to pay our property taxes and mortgages with no income from our homes. It's clear that we as homeowners are being targeted, opposed to the major developers of these new luxury apartments who are the true bad actors within the housing market. So I just ask that our officials take the time to understand that times are changing and that the implementation of these draconian regulations only penalize small homeowners and do nothing for the people who actually are from here and live here and grew up here. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ingrid.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, hi. I'm a Airbnb host, super host here in Brooklyn. And I will say that I'm not going to say anything different from anybody else in terms of other Airbnb hosts. I am speaking from the point of view of a homeowner, but I do support this also too with people who are renting rooms in apartments. New York City is a melting pot. New York City is, I could almost say, used to be one of the best cities in the world. But my questions and my problems with this, I have no problem with registering. I registered when the first registration came out. What I have a problem with is having all of this done as a blanket. This does not seem to be well thought out. I am hearing things that are not actual facts. My home, and I would bet you most of the homes here that are being used for short-term rentals are not what's causing the problems here. So what are you going to blame us for next? Homelessness? You're going to blame us for crime? What are you doing? I am a, I've lived in Brooklyn my entire life, was born and bred here, and this borough and the city has changed and not for the better. But what my problem is, is I'm, I'm actually going to start looking at all of you, assembly people and councilmen, and readjust how I vote. Because if you're going to sit here and tell me that all of these things, these neighborhoods and all these things changing is because of Airbnb, it's bullshit. Excuse my language, but this is bullshit. I sat here all day waiting for my turn to speak, and I am so angry. Look at yourselves. Turn the mirror on yourselves. What have these politicians and what has the New York City local government done to protect me as someone who used to rent? And in fact, I've gone through all the positions. I've been a renter. I've been, I had my home on the market for eight years renting to people. And in fact, the reason why I decided down the line to stop renting is because I had someone who stopped paying me rent, and I was going to have to find money to go to court and drag it out. And in fact, I was told by a lawyer, you don't want to go to court. It's going to be worse for you. So when I sit back and I hear the, the neighborhoods are changing and this is happening, the neighborhoods are changing because New York City government is not City government is not protecting renters properly and they're not protecting landlords. I'm a small person, a small landlord, and I was not protected when my, when my tenant wanted to squat. So for you to come now and tell me, well, I, I'm trying to just find an extra way to keep my building up, and I'm trying to find an extra way to keep my home renovated and to keep my family in the, in my house, and then I can't do it this way. Let me tell you something. My house is better kept than my neighbors who do not Airbnb. I've had to go next door to my, to my neighbor and tell him to stop partying, turn down his music because you're disturbing me and my guests. Where does that all fit in? I'm a data analyst and what I want to know is, one, where are all these records and numbers coming from? I've lived here in Brooklyn all my life and all I've seen is on my block and in neighborhood, I'm in Bed-Stuy, and all I see are buildings coming up that are not affordable. There's no way you're going to tell me that the average income in Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn is like a $50,000 or $60,000. It's all lies. So if you're going to, my thing is, if you're going to go and tell me I need to register, put all my stuff out there, I'm fine with that, but fix those rules first. Don't blanket me with all of these businesses that y'all give subsidies to and allow to come in and change these neighborhoods. I've been changing my neighborhood for the better because like everybody else has said, I give out a house manual and I encourage them to go to the, the restaurant on the corner, to go to my local Walgreens, to go to my local coffee shop. I, I have friends who own businesses and I tell them they should go there. So I'm building the economy. You guys are, are taking it away from low class and middle class families. So what I want to say to you is, when I lose my Airbnb income and I can't keep up my property taxes and I can't keep up my house, who's coming here and giving me money? Are you going to give me a subsidy to put, to put in sprinklers? Are you going to help me pay for it? I work, me and my husband both work full time jobs and we run our Airbnb and we do side businesses. You know why? Because we can't afford to live in New York on just our salaries. You want me to register? You want me to put in a sprinkler? Give me the money to do so. But you know what? If I fill out an application, you're not going to help me pay for it because I can't afford to do that on my own. So I'm sorry to go over time, but you politicians, y'all need to turn the mirror on yourselves. What have you done to contribute to the downfall and all the homelessness and everything that's going on here? And you're going to blame Airbnb? You're going to blame Verbo? You're going to blame me? Y'all need to turn the mirrors on yourself. And just a little small note, how is a hotel going to host, host families? A hotel is not going to host families. And if you get rid of all of the Airbnb people because of these regulations, then what's going to happen? You guys don't like monopolies, but a hotel is going to become a monopoly. They're going to, or what they're going to do is instead of charging $350 a night for a hotel room, it's going to go to 500 because what? There is no competition. So I'm sorry to be angry, but I'm angry at bullshit. Put your plan in place, but do it right. Do not put a blanket on it. Do it in phases. Make it clear and easy. And you know what? If I have to tell you what to do, the first thing to do is present to us, present to everybody. I need to see facts. Tell me what's coming off the market. Tell me how I'm affecting all of this. What about the hotels? What are the hotels doing? How are they helping the city besides giving y'all money and tourist dollars? I pay taxes on all my Airbnb earnings. So I don't know what the hell is going on here, but I'm sorry to go over time, but I'm so angry and I might be the angriest one here because I think this is all bullshit. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. John Mudd. Oh, before we go to, to John, excuse me, Hans, I, I know that you're still having microphone troubles. Your hand changed. I sent an email to both you and Cynthia Acevedo. I invite you to call my landline and leave a voicemail. I'll be sure to listen to it and I'll, I'll forward that voicemail to the OIC rules mailbox. So that'll be part of the permanent record. I also invite you to send written comments if we, if you can't get your microphones to work. Okay, go ahead, John.
John, you're
There we go. We got it. Thanks so much. My name's John Mudd. I'm with the Midtown South Community Council. And, and we, we have regular meetings. We've been involved with the homeless and housing crisis, the hunger. And, and we, we understand this, I think, pretty well. And we're still digging in. There's a lot more to understand. And thanks, Ingrid, for letting me follow you. She's angry. Everybody's angry. I'm partial to the local law. Transparency is good. We need data. I'm assuming this law is meant to protect residents and prevent apartments from being taken off the market for those who need them. But will this achieve our objectives? Or is it a Band-Aid? And, and are we getting to the core problem? I mean, does it take care of our housing stock? I mean, we have a health and hunger, homeless and housing crises. Okay, the contributors are simple. It's, Airbnb does contribute, Ingrid, it does. And for all those other people that are, but Airbnb does participate. Warehousing participates. We have built, we have not built housing for elderly. We haven't built affordable housing. We have not built low income housing. Landlords chase, are chasing the economic system of ours. The influx of hotels, which Bloomberg has allowed to ravage New York City, has caused serious problems. Real estate industry and developers have such a hold on this city, I, I don't think we can really understand the depth of it. Now, if this law is not implemented properly, it can create more problems and exacerbate the crises. I mean, we've seen where the workarounds with different laws that have been, and it's been created more problems. And what I'm, what I'm concerned with is, is who will it really serve? I mean, when you have a landlord association and the hotel industry representative, and representatives, and a mayor who is partial to real estate industry and hotel industry, speaking for a law, it worries me. Are we bringing people of all categories of residents to the table? I mean, I've known Joe, a friend of mine, who's limited income, 80 something years old, who, you know, can't really cover his rent at times. He'll go away for a few months to see his relatives, rent out his place. And it's a very nice home. He wants to stay here. He wants to live here. He's very comfortable in New York. And it, it gives him a nice, you know, trip away to see his family. I've known, also I've known people who actually jumped into the capitalist system of ours to, to raise their income enormous, I mean, enormous change in their income by managing several properties that took apartments off the rent. But those apartments would not serve to diminish the crisis. I mean, there's plenty of figures of 30% of Airbnb people who are renting 25 different apartments. I mean, 30% of the Airbnb have been known to have more than, you know, around 25 different apartments they're renting. I mean, are we making a business out of it? Or are we keeping people from existing? I mean, some of the more important testimonies I've heard is Alfred Roach, Leah James, Mike Harp, Paul Briscoe, Gwen, Jen, Himley, William Gomez, Vivian, Amy, KL, Ian, Ingrid. Amy should not need to do an Airbnb to survive, or, or be threatened to be out of her, her home. I mean, and we heard from Suzette and she, she needs her Airbnb. I mean, people are put in these, this position and they're trying to survive. Using Airbnb for survival or a business is important to distinguish. And I'm, and I'm sorry, but residential buildings should not be a business. They are homes. Airbnb is more costly than truly affordable and usually less costly than a hotel. The registry, registry should serve people, not to help the corporation to control every aspect of our lives. Now, I have no sympathy for people to serve, who want to serve visitors over people who live here. But however, you cannot give tools to people or corporations or special interests to further destabilize residents who are struggling, or of those who are desperately in need of a home. Now, I'll bring you back to the testimonies of Tom Kaler, Linda Rosenthal, and Gail Brewers, who, who want to stop a serious invasion of people's peace and quiet and to curb our crises. So we should, we should take the opportunity and come together and discuss with them. And is this serving public's interest and the crisis in mind? Or is it serving corporations or hotels' interest, or even the mayor's partiality to them? Now, and I'll leave it at that. And if anybody wants to contact me, I'm leaving my information in the little chat here. Feel free to reach out. And we can, you know, I'll be happy to, you know, get together a meeting and discuss this further. I think we all need to talk. I don't think, I don't think we need to, we need to find a better way to, to fix the underpinning problem. And I'd appreciate it if you do reach out.
Thank you, John. The next speaker is Kyriakos B. After that, we'll hear from Margenat Moore Roberts, Sarah, and Lynn.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Oh, first, I want to start by saying that unfortunately, the city has a tendency to use any power it can. And with this registration, they get new powers to abuse. What we do in our own homes, that is the power they can abuse. Even if the city doesn't abuse the power, all it takes is one inspector on a power trip, one manager to make, wanting to make a name for themselves, one politician to make, to one trying to make headlines for this information to be used as a weapon against the people of New York. And that's my concern. I would like to explain how me and my wife have used Airbnb because this is a human issue as well. We own our apartment and begin to use Airbnb to help supplement our income, to help pay for our expenses. We live there full time and were able to host people from all over the world and make some incredible friends. Fast forward, my wife began to have multiple health issues. We decided to move to Florida temporarily for her healing, and it has helped tremendously, thank the Lord. Our apartment sat empty for a year. We realized the financial strain of being in Florida and having our apartment in New York was just too much. We didn't want to rent it out to tenants as I traveled back and forth to New York and wanted to stay in my own home. We also don't want to deal with evicting a tenant when we do move back to New York full time. We use Airbnb to help pay our bills. We don't make a profit. We don't even cover all the expenses. It just helps, helps pay for our bills so we can afford more medical treatment for my wife. I do not believe Airbnb to be the cause of the housing issue in New York. I grew up in New York City, lived there all my life. I've seen people priced out of their communities. And I've seen these huge develops going up and do nothing to help the housing issue. The city gives these enormous tax breaks to billionaire developers to include quote unquote affordable housing. These affordable housings go for two, three, four, five, $6,000 a month. I don't know how much anyone else makes, but for me, that kind of rent is not affordable. People I talked to in these communities all over New York City, because my job takes me all throughout the boroughs, you know, Queens, Brooklyn, Bronx, and everywhere, they talk about how much rent has gone up. They can't afford to live there. They can't find a new apartment. They talk about landlords increasing too much at rent and new development events being too expensive. I have never once in person met a person saying, met someone who said, oh man, short term rentals, I can't live here because of all these short term rentals. Not once. Aside from the greedy landlords and billionaire developers that take our tax money for their profit because the city's blinded by their donations, there's also the little guy, the one who owns the one, two, three family building. You know, the city raised their taxes, their utilities go ups, all their expenses go ups. And, but their salaries don't. So what do they do? They increase their rents or have to supplement with Airbnb to help themselves. We have, we personally have had so many guests come stay with us because they can't afford an apartment. They can't afford a hotel. They come to New York City to study. They come to New York City for a new job. They come to the vacation and they literally can't afford an apartment, which is contrary to everything being said here, is because the Airbnb is more affordable than apartment. Contrary to what some is being saying here. They would rather stay in Airbnb. And for international guests, so many of them tell us that they're excited to go to New York and they can't find a hotel. Thank God we found you because we were going to cancel our flight. And that's money lost to the city. Another point to make, for me and my wife, that Airbnb has been a lifesaver for us to actually stay in. My wife is immune compromised. And so when we want to go somewhere, we can't stay in a hotel. There's too many people. It's too high of a risk. So we stay in Airbnb because it's significantly safer for us. Taking away our Airbnb rental in New York would only leave our apartment empty and do nothing for the housing in our community. It would just increase our financial strain while we try to pay for my wife's medical treatment. We do not want to go through loopholes and be restricted, restricted on our lifeline to affordable medical treatment. I don't want to weigh the risk, the risk of the city changing its mind or inspector on a power trip with what I actually need financially. And the quick comment about the number of guests, I find it confusing because, you know, again, grew up in New York City. So many college students stay, so many roommates in an apartment, young professionals, so many rooms in an apartment, way over occupancy because that's what they have to do. The city doesn't crack down on them either. I want to end by two quick things. As noted before, I see many assembly matters, assembly matters, senators, council people, politicians that are not here anymore. I truly hope Mr. Clausnier will force these people to sit and watch the full recording, or to admit to the public that their partition in this meeting was nothing more than kowtowing to the hotel industry and developers, and they don't represent their constituents. You know, these things will change how people vote for their representatives. And these people who just showed up just to talk and then disappear, they shouldn't be crying about a stone election or any crap like that when they're voted out. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Margenat Moore Roberts.
You recorded it?
Kyriakos, your, your sound is still live. Okay, there you go. I don't see, I don't see that Margenat is still in the list of participants. Next we'll go to Sarah. Sarah, we've sent a unmute request to you. After Sarah, we'll hear from Lynn. Phone number that begins with 917 and ends with 66. A phone number that begins with 917 and ends with 62. Then Marie, Giabrisco, Helen Marley, E. Stein, Jean or Jean, and Sarah? Sending another request on mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, okay, great. Unfortunately, I just got called away to another meeting for the last 10 minutes, so I didn't get to hear what came before. But I imagine that my story is a story that many people have, so I just want to share it. Because hearing everybody's stories, I think, is really helping to give a round feeling of, of what's happening here. And I hope that, I hope that everybody's listening. I hope that the assembly people are listening and, and that hosts are listening. So I'm a host. I'm a fourth generation New Yorker. I come from a long lineage of artists and artisans that have small businesses and that have run them out of New York City. My family, along with many other families, probably many other families here, have grown the city into what it is today off of our backs. My family has all been run out of New York. I am the last one standing. I have a small family, a family of three, a fourth one coming in two, two weeks. We had the strength and fortitude to go for this last child because Airbnb was, because the city was allowing one and two family houses to rent out one unit. We bought our, our two family house in Brooklyn four and a half years ago, after I lost my small business in Manhattan from a large developer that after I put all of my life savings into building that business, nine months later, they kicked me out of my 10 year lease and I lost everything. The city was not there to protect me then. The house that I grew up in, which my parents sold for, I think, a $70,000 profit, is now on the market for $21 million. The city didn't step in then to save my family from it. Now, I'm being told four and a half years after putting everything that we had from the business into this house so that we can have Airbnb to support our family. Now, at eight months pregnant, we're being told that we're no longer allowed to do that. I agree with others that the city is overstepping their boundaries into the rights of homeowners to be able to do that, to be able to do what they need to, to support their families and stay in New York. When I was a child, my family rented out one room in our When I was a child, my family rented out one room in our apartment to travelers from the community that came and went, and that allowed us to supplement our income so that we could stay in New York City. This is no different than what people have been doing for years and years. The housing crisis has way more to do with the city becoming a strip mall than protecting small businesses that actually built the New York that people want to come and live in and want to come and visit. The city is going to see a very different fabric as soon as they change this. We, just like I've heard from so many other hosts, we live in a neighborhood. This is actually the neighborhood I was born into, which we left because it became very dangerous. This neighborhood has zero hotels for at least three miles out. There's a, it's a, it's all families here. We host people that are coming for local weddings, that are coming for funerals, that are coming for family reunions. These people otherwise would not be able to afford to come to New York and they wouldn't be able to stay close to their families. I have no problem registering with the city. I think it's a good idea to keep things safe. But we have to really think of like, who are the, who are the people that are making ends meet? And the people that are just coming in to make massive profits? That's not the majority of hosts. And the laws need to be more fair. People that live in their residences of one and two family houses really shouldn't be in this at all. It was promised to us that we were not going to be touched. The city went back on it. I think I agree with what many other people have said is that you really need to look at these laws in separate ways and see, you know, who the good and bad characters are. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And the next speaker is Lynn.
Yeah, hi. Thank you, Sarah, for that. In some ways, I'm seconding what Sarah's saying and adding my story to the mix here, and thanks for, for letting me speak. I also want to say that I'm representing at least five other individuals that couldn't be here today because of the time of this hearing. In terms of their own experiences are very similar to my own. I am a owner of a two family dwelling in Ridgewood, Queens. And I've been there for over a decade. And in the last several years, I've been Airbnb my own unit because I have been in and out of work and been doing some freelance work and things are a little bit not as stable as they used to be. But in that process, I sometimes, I rent my place out for a week or a weekend here and there, my entire unit. And as it currently stands, these new regulations, I will no longer be allowed to do that. My own home, I will not be allowed to, my own apartment, I will not be allowed to rent out anymore. If I ever want to go on vacation and use some of that income to leave my house, I won't be allowed to do that either. And so it substantially restricts my ability to use my own home, my own apartment in the way that I've always been able to utilize it in order to stay afloat and pay my mortgage. And Airbnb has been critical for me during the pandemic to survive. And I'm hearing a lot of comments around the, the one and two family homes and wanting to, to, for those groups to kind of be looked at separately. And I think that that makes a lot of sense, but I know there's a lot of renters out there that also are going to be impacted. I can't speak for them, but I'm sure that those voices also should be heard. But in terms of the one, two, three family units, it feels like there, the, the rules as they've been written are so onerous that it makes it very difficult for us to be able to function and to be able to do with, with our apartments, what we've been able to do, what we were promised we were able to do with Airbnb in the past. The other issue that I also have is I have been planning a family and part of that plan was to be able to at some point take over my upstairs apartment and have family members come and help me raise a child. And when my parents can't stay, it was going to be a place that I could get a little extra income for renting to Airbnb and I no longer will be able to do that. And so this, these onerous rules make it so that I can't do those things as well and, and be able to raise a family in the city and stay in the city, which is what I'd hoped to do. And as currently written in terms of, I don't have a problem with registrations, but as it currently is written, the way the registrations are, I would definitely need a lawyer and I would definitely need to talk to somebody in order to understand what the rules are. It's very difficult to understand what's going on. And so that's another big aspect. Everybody that's going to sign up registration, it's hard to understand what are we signing up for? We're going to need lawyers to figure that out. That's going to cost us more. It's going to be more difficult for us. And then another thing that I think I've been a little bit concerned about, haven't heard raised as much, is the idea of, oh, you can just simply, you can do 30 day plus rentals while squatting laws come into effect for 13 days. And so I would open myself up to that as a problem for my, my dwelling. And then lastly, I've been hearing a lot of information about numbers that have been thrown around and that there's more Airbnb dwellings than there are rental units. And I've heard several of the city council members using those numbers. And those numbers are apples to oranges. They're not the same. I live in my dwelling. My dwelling would never be a unit that could ever be rented on the, on the market for a long term rental because I live there, but yet I, I'm on Airbnb. So that inflates those numbers. And so if that's the kind of information that the city is using to make its conclusions, that feels super problematic. And I hope that there is better information that you guys are using to make your, to make your decisions. And lastly, I would just say to give an example of the type of guests that are in my, that are in my home on a regular basis, I guess that I live in Ridgewood, Queens, there are zero hotels there. And the people that typically will rent out my place for a week or a weekend here and there are family of, of folks that live in my neighborhood. Right now, I have somebody there that is caring for her daughter's newborn baby. So it's able to give a resource for people in my neighborhood that allows them to stay close to family. And when you have no hotels around, and so this will completely eliminate that for, for my community. And that being said, thank you for letting me speak here today.
Thank you. The next, we're going to go to two phone numbers. I do. I, I see in the, in the chat that someone asked for a list of the elected officials. I would do not, I would, there is not a public facing attendee list, but I will try to put in the chat the elected officials that have attended. I also see lots of questions about one and two families. I, in the proposed rules, there is a section that all hosts will have to agree to comply with certain, with the building code, the fire code, housing maintenance code, multiple dwelling law, et cetera. And the proposed rules reference specific sections that hosts will be asked to. You know, for the folks with one and two families, it seems like there's a, you know, some concern and a lack of information. I, I'm going to now put into the chat the definitions of one family and two family dwelling as well as the definition of family. These are the sources from the building code and the housing maintenance code that, that the rules about more, 30 days or more and not more than two guests, where they come from. I, I will put, I'm going to post them in as we go to the next speaker. The next speaker is phone number ending in six six, starts nine one seven two, ends in six six. Let's see if we can. Now I'm having trouble. I don't see. It's unfortunate. It seems like that number has come off. The next speaker is nine one seven four asterisks, ending in six two. It seems like that person also is no longer available. The next is Marie.
Hi.
Hi, Marie.
Good afternoon. My name is Marie. I'm French and I've been living in New York City for 14 years. And I think, like, almost all the points I wanted to address were addressed. So I'm very happy that someone did it because my English is not good enough to be able to articulate my, my thinking. But what I would, would need to say is that New York City is a very special place. And I think that the politicians should find a very special way to address this problem of regulations because we all agree that rules are necessary to avoid to risk to be, to, to get trapped and to have all those bad actors doing a short term, short term rentals. But I think we all have our reason for renting out our apartment or our house. But my question would be what the city offers to allow people who wants to do a bed and breakfast to do bed and breakfast? Which means that we used to have in New York City bed and breakfast, but because of all those complicated rules, everything got shut down. But bed and breakfast were actually place where people were paying tax, hotel tax, income tax. Everything was done in the right way, but because of different kind of rules, they had to shut down. But still, those places are very needed just because it's a different approach than what hotels can offer. And, and for example, in my situation, so I'm a Harlem resident. My husband is a professor at Columbia University. We are living in this neighborhood for a very long time. And I wanted to open my home to families. And I said, families, this is my situation. Because when I was traveling with my husband to some conference with my three kids, I couldn't find any places I felt comfortable with newborns because there were no fridge in the hotel, no toys, nothing. So it means I was like in the, in the hotel room with my kids, not being able to keep like milk in the fridge, not able to have them in a, into, in a good bed, for example, all these kind of things. So all the recommendation I would had, I would need, I couldn't find it. So that's why I think it's very important to have those rules that allow people to do business because this is a business, but where are the rules? We are happy to pay tax. I used to pay hotel tax, sales tax, everything, but I had to give up just because we are not allowed to have more than two guests in our house. So that's something I think that should be addressed. And also when we are going away because we are French, so if obviously we're going to France, we would like to sublet our own house without feeling guilty of doing this because New York City is very expensive and like just sitting on a, I don't know, $6,000 because we are not allowed to sublet when we are gone to friends, friend of friends. It's, it's, it's not fine. So I feel we should not feel guilty to do what we are doing because we like to do it. And it's something special that New York City should keep. We are proud New Yorkers and New Yorkers will always be together, but we have to feel the city backing up to do what we like to do. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gia Briscoe?
Hello?
Hi, there we go.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Clausner, for allowing me to speak. My name is Gia Briscoe. I'm a super host along with my husband in a brownstone in Brooklyn, New York. And my family has owned this building for over 100 years. And I'm definitely not for this law in its entirety. I think it's blanket law. And as everyone else has said, I'm really not going to say anything different, except one thing. This was a point. And this goes out to all the people that should be listening to us right now that I see aren't here anymore, that I hope they hear all of our concerns, but you know, I, I don't, who knows? This city can't even handle NYCHA and issues, NYCHA issues and DOB violations that put families at risk every day. Yet you still want to come after us, which we are as super hosts, as you can see through Airbnb on all of our people that have stayed here, pristine conditions. I mean, we take care of our home much better than people take care of hotel rooms. They're safer here. We want our guests safe, just like we want to be safe. Speaking to the little laws in there that are just ridiculous, the locking of the doors. I mean, family members lock their doors between rooms and hotel rooms have locks on them. So how is it any different for us if, how is a guest going to feel, you know, confident in the home or we're going to feel safe not having locks on our doors? It's, it's just not a realistic, it's not realistic. Where, where are the people advocating for us, for homeowners, small homeowners? And I know this has been said before, but even during COVID, like someone else mentioned, we, we, we had to pay, you know, our fair share, our taxes, our mortgages. And renters got all, and, and nothing against renters. I love you. I have one myself. And we do not overcharge them because we're good people. We have one space in our house that we use for our own use when we don't Airbnb it. So that apartment that, well, that suite, that guest suite would never be on the market. So it's not going to take away from the housing. It's not going to add to the housing. Each individual host has their own story. Okay? And a lot of them are the same, but there's little nuances in each one. This house has been owned by family and had family living in it for over 100 years, as I said. The space that we rent out, my mother-in-law passed away. And without that space, there's no way we would have made it through COVID where musicians or, or livelihoods got decimated because of COVID. And there's no other way we can afford to stay in the city we grew up in without Airbnb. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Helen Morley?
Hi, my name is Helen Morley and I'm going to speak, I'm an Airbnb host for about seven years. And I'm going to speak from a renter's perspective on this issue. I started, I've been living in my apartment for 22 years and in the same building for 35. I am currently disabled and I started Airbnb when I was, my private, my bedroom, when I was sick and I couldn't work. And I chose to go that route because it made me independent without having to go on welfare, get social security and do food stamps. Did I become wealthy? No. But I paid my rent. I paid my utilities. I encouraged people to visit the East Village at a time where it wasn't that popular, to be honest. And I helped people enjoy the city I love so much and was able to stay in my home. And I'm really very concerned that these regulations are being written so broadly and not taking in account for the different class of Airbnb posts we have. From the, from the renter as myself to the homeowners in the single bedrooms or double bed, or double, two apartment units, single home units, to the landlords that turn it into mass hotels. Or, or people, commercial operators who rent four bedroom apartments, don't live there and rent out each bedroom separately. They're all different classes and the rules should be little more, I want to say, reactive to the different types of hosts there are. And I also want to speak as a renter for the people who are gig workers. This is a very expensive city. And if you don't get vacation time, you don't get paid sick time, you don't get paid days off, you can never not take time off to not work because you always have to make that rent. What I don't understand is why is someone who's a renter cannot rent out their entire unit three weeks a year? Three weeks a year. You're never going to be able to operate a commercial business out of that with those regulations. But it will allow the working poor to maybe take the kids to the beach, to go visit mom. I just think there needs to be more, I think the word is nuance is what I'm looking for in the proposed regulations. And I'm fine with registering, registering. I have issues with, I know people have issues with rent stabilization versus open market, but I know some people rent stabilization. They're paying a lot more rent than I think you people realize, two thousand dollars under rent stabilization in a similar situation as mine. Um, I just think if you're living in your unit and you're, and if the regulate, and you're not getting complaints from your neighbor and you're a good neighbor and a good citizen of the city, there has to be some consideration for our issues. I will lose my apartment to be point blank with this rule that's coming in. I am disabled. I cannot work. My cousin lives in my building. She helps me. My aide lives a block away. She's here in a moment's notice if I have a problem. I have, I highly doubt the city wants to pay for my housing if I lose my 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 home. A- and that's all, that's simply it. I I took my entire savings that I managed to have from my retirement to pay my rent during the pandemic when there was no guests. I didn't take advantage of ERAP because I didn't trust the government to do it. But now I'm left at this point, but I'm not going to be able to make my, I may not be able to make my rent in a couple of months if these rules go into effect and they go further into the private room, which is what my fear is, that private room rental. And to be honest, be able to rent my place out when I go visit my mom twice a year in Florida in the winter, when the business isn't great. It just makes that difference. Again, I pay my taxes. I file. Um, I'm not wealthy. This people after, after expenses, I'm lucky if I come home with ten thousand dollars extra money a year just to pay the bills and my food. So I I just think there's no nuance, there's no consideration for the type of people who host and the different classes within the city. That needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Helen. Uh, the next speaker is E Stein, and then we'll go to Jean or Jean. Um, and I see that Denise Smith Allen has returned, whose testimony we skipped over. We'll we'll go back to her after those two. Uh, E Stein. That seems like E Stein is not on. Um, we'll go to Jean or Jean. Oh, I see E Stein, okay. Uh, so we'll go back to E Stein. I oh. I'm so sorry. I had it sorted by individuals with their hands up and I was scrolling down below. Go ahead.
Hey, um, thank you so much and really, uh, thank you for everybody for the contribution to this conversation. Um, I think that, you know, the underlying issue here is not so much this registration law. It's uh more so the, in reference to uh single-family um and two-family homes, I'm speaking specifically to that. It's changing the building code. Uh, the building code does not allow for short-term rentals uh for un- under thirty days in single-family and two-family, family homes. That's the law. That's how it is. And I think as homeowners, um, we need to address the underlying law. That's, you know, that this registration is built on top of this registration law. Um, so I would say to, you know, all your, all the single-family and two-family homeowners, um, we should be banding together to try and actually amend the building code, uh, which is, you know, it's antiquated. Let's put it that way. Uh, you know, a two-family home, you should be able to rent out the studio on the bottom floor if you're living in that, in that building. Um, uh, as far as, you know, the this registration law uh is concerned, I don't have any questions regarding the law. I'm more concerned about um the rollout. So um, I, today I have no idea about, you know, the reservations that I have uh coming in, in let's say, March and April. I have no idea what's gonna happen to that uh that husband and wife that are coming with their two kids that already made plans to come to the city. Um, so to Mr. Klosner, I would love to get some clarifications to how this is actually being rolled out. Uh, how exactly uh is the law going to look as far as like registering on Airbnb? Um, you know, it's supposed to come into effect in January, but enforcement doesn't start until May. I have no specifics to that. And I have, you know, uh, I have families that they want to know whether their reservation is going to be canceled. Um, so I would really appreciate if at any point during this call, if you have any more information about that, that you can, you know, educate the public, because I'm sure a lot of people are having, have the same questions I do. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Jean or Jean. Requesting an unmute. Um, okay, uh Denise Smith Allen. Denise requesting a requesting your unmute. Okay, um. Uh, we have a couple more hands raised. We'll go to anonymous.
Anonymous, I've sent a request unmute. Okay. Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Um, so I I really have the question of are are these public comments going to actually affect the rules as proposed? I mean, more or less, I heard the public politician speak in the beginning, just blanketly stating that they accept these rules. Uh, I'm not sure that they've even read the specifics of the rules. In reading them, they just seem like completely onerous when there already are laws, like the multiple dwelling law, already covers any building that's three units and over. You can't rent an entire, I mean, that's a state law that already exists, that covers almost all of Manhattan. So I mean, the only people I've really heard speaking here are small-time users of the platform that in, it sounds like the majority of people, we're not even talking about apartments that would be part of the rental stock. And, you know, again, all these numbers being thrown around. We also know that there are much bigger problems that are affecting um the housing prices for rentals in the city, including like, you know, the warehousing of sixty thousand apartments that are rent-controlled. So I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm confused about the process. I agree with the last speaker. Uh, knowing how this is going to roll out uh is going to be really important. I feel like this has been done with a lot of secrecy and a not a lot of communication. Frankly, I'm anonymous here because I I'm nervous from hearing from people here and reading the comments that people talking are being targeted by the office. And I mean, all of this makes no sense to me when the data is there to go after the big actors. I mean, why isn't that the focus? Uh, I don't understand why small business owners and, you know, people trying to keep their apartments appear to be the focus on this onerous regulation. Uh, the rest of everything I was going to say has been said, and thank you to the host again. I'm sure this is, you know, not the easiest thing ever.
Um, thank you. Can folk, can folks hear me? I, my camera seems to have frozen. Um, okay. Uh, there we go. Okay. Uh, it froze as I was blinking too, which made it look like I was asleep. I assure you, I was not and was listening. Um, uh, Michelle Rabinevich, I'm sorry, Maria Rabinevich.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Um, I think I have multiple concerns. Uh, one, probably the most important one is my building is a C-class building. We only have four units. Two of those units have rent stabilized. I rent two of my rooms at an Airbnb uh just to have, to be able to afford the taxes in New York. Um, I have requested uh and a review of my taxes. And I was told by the city, by a city representative to sell my house and move if I could not afford the taxes. I depend on Airbnb to pay for my taxes. I do not enjoy having two rooms in my house rented. I would rather not do it. Yet, here we are. This is what I need to do to pay the city taxes. Don't forget about my mortgage, just the city taxes. Uh, I have two units that are rent stabilized with people leaving there for twenty-plus years. So they're paying basically the same rent that it was twenty, twenty years ago. This currently, the units that they are renting would go for six times what they are paying. Um, so I have no possibility to collect any more money from this tenants. Um, the 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 taxes that I'm paying are ridiculously expensive. Uh, yet the only way that I have to to save some money or uh get some money to pay for this taxes is being taken away from me. Um, I sincerely think that this bill favors anyone who's loving hotels and other larger buildings that based on their uh the money that they are making, most most certainly do not need partner assistance from the city. The people who need this assist, this assistance from the city, it's small building, building owners and those of us who have rent stabilized apartments and who are paying a ridiculous amount of money on taxes, which the city refuses to lower. Which is fine. I will pay the taxes gladly if I can use my two apartments. Uh, my two uni, my my two bedrooms upstairs in my house to rent uh on Airbnb. Otherwise, the city has to come up, come up with another solution. Again, I would rather not having people that I don't know wandering around my house. Uh, but this is the situation I I mean to, I see myself. If they were to, if if they, the law passes and I cannot uh rent this unit because I'm a C-class building, I would be in a position that I will not rent two, two rooms in my house to a long-term tenant. It's not going to happen. I depend on those rooms and I all, I have those room for family visitors. And right now, that the only thing that is giving me some income is the flexibility that I get from Airbnb to have people in my house when I want to and have my family when I want to. Um, so this, this two uh rooms in my house would not assist the city in the way that they want to. Um, and on top of that, I would be losing this income that I used to pay for the city taxes. As I said, there, there is a simple solution. You don't want me to rent my rooms on Airbnb? Fine. You need to lower my taxes. And that would be my comment.
Thank you, Maria. Uh, the next, uh, there was a speaker, Michelle Bonafils with hand up. Michelle, I'm going to unmute you. And your hand is down now. I don't know if.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I, great.
Um, I I lowered my hand because I I'm just adding to the chorus. Uh, I think the, I'm I'm completely for the law, because we need, we need uh regulation, because it's a jungle out there. Lots of people are bad actors. Uh, I agree completely with that, but small homeowners like myself, I own a three-family home. I live in one of the unit. I rent two apartments on top that are long-term tenants, regular tenants with yearly leases. Uh, my apartment is a duplex with, I live on one floor. I have my bed, I have two bedrooms, but I cannot rent the two bedrooms because I'm limited to two people. So another, another person was saying, you know, business are regulated, we, people have licenses. I would love to have a license and be allowed to operate uh a bed and breakfast, but I I can't. There is no no provision for that in in the New York City uh um rules and and laws. Uh, so it's kind of a, you know, something is missing. Um, something is missing. People should, so people who doesn't, don't want to run a business should be allowed to to just rent one room to, a lot of New Yorkers depend on it. People said that already. It's so expensive, et cetera, et cetera. Forgive my accent. I'm a US citizen. I've been living in Harlem for twenty years and in New York for almost forty years. And um yeah, the city needs to look more closely at at those rules and provide for either exemption or or come up with new rules to legalize uh bed and breakfast in people's home. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you, Christian, for being such a gracious host.
Uh, thank you, Michelle. That's very kind. I'm happy to be here and hear from everybody. Um, if there's anyone else left who wishes to speak, uh, please use the raised hand function. Um, while, while we're giving folks the chance to raise their hands if they if they wish, um, I put in the chat the definition of family, which is the source of the limitation to up to two-roomers, boarders or lodgers. Um, that's in the chat. It's also in Housing Maintenance Code twenty-seven dash two zero zero four. Um, this is a rule that's been on the books for quite some time. Um, I, some folks have mentioned Class C buildings. I believe you're referring to the Department of Finance Tax Classification. Um, everything in that tax classification is a multiple dwelling. Um, and so if it's three or more units, then it's, um, and it's for residential, it's not certified for hotel, then it's a Class A multiple dwelling. Um, and I am going to put the list of speakers into the chat uh as was requested. Um, someone asked if we're recording this session, the transcript will be available. Um, yes, I, I'm not, it's not clear to me how long it takes uh WebEx to get me the transcript and the recording, but they will be, they will be available. Um, details on how to access them will be available on our website. Um, we'll put them in approximately where I, we have now the notice about the proposed rules. I'm having a little bit of trouble putting this stuff in the chat. Okay, I've included in the chat all of the speakers. Um, I do not see any other raised hands. Um, at this point, I'm I'm going to just pause the hearing temporarily. Um, I will leave the, I will leave it open for a few minutes more in case anyone else decides to raise their hand. Uh, I'll be right back. Okay, thank you, everybody, for indulging me and giving me a short break. I see it was time well spent and now we have another person with their hand up. Damon Bolden, who was a speaker previously on the list. Damon, I'm requesting you to unmute and provide your comment.
Hi, um, so I heard all of this, but I'm not, it's not clear on what happens na- next. And yeah, what happens next? I'm not sure about what we can do and what happens next.
In my opening comments in the beginning, I, um, I mentioned that the next step is OSE finalizes the rules. I know one of the prior speakers asked. We do consider all comments and look to determine if there are changes to the rules that can or should be made. Then we will publish the final rules and they'll be published on the New York City Rules website as well as the City Record. The law goes into effect January 9th. Fines don't start until May 9th. The, that interim period will be for hosts to get their applications in, get online, and get into the system. And then in May 9th, the, once fines begin at that point, we'll expect that the platforms will continue with the verification process. I, I hope, hopefully that answers the question. I do, I do welcome everybody to continue to monitor our website on the registration tab. We'll have more information on what's happening in the meantime. And, you know, I know a number of folks here have additional questions, have, I, I've seen a number of people talking about some recent enforcement against one M. Folks can reach out to our office, osce@cityhall.nyc.gov. We're, we're happy to engage in conversation and explain. We're, we're always happy to explain to someone who received enforcement, uh, what the violations were, how to fix them, what the process for fixing them, and also what the process for contesting them is. And there's one other point I will address. I see, uh, there's comments about the violations. When OSE issues violations for transient use, it will also issue violations for not having the kinds of required safety measures needed when there is transient use. These violations don't require anybody to put in place a sprinkler, requires them to discontinue the illegal occupancy and engage either in permanent residential use or limiting themselves to up to two-roomers, boarders, and lodgers, maintaining a common household with the occupant of the unit. I've tried for everybody to, oh, Hans has his hands up. Let's see if we can unmute him. Hans?
Yes.
You can hear me, okay.
Fantastic.
Thanks for having me, Mr. Klausner. I am an owner, Airbnb host, and our story is basically we have a little bit larger apartment with four bedrooms. And I have four children, two of which are in college now, so they don't live there. Another one is going to college in about six months. So our apartment is a little bit larger than we need, my wife and I, basically. And we have supplemented our income to pay for college and the high cost of living in Manhattan, where we have been all our lives, basically, and in this building for 30 years plus with doing Airbnb. And we understand it should be regulated. I think anything like this should be regulated to weed out the bad players, the bad players being defined as, I think, more commercial businesses that have many Airbnb rentals and the host doesn't stay there. Our situation is not that. Uh, we live there. We always live there. We're always there. And when our renters are there and we, we would like to continue that. The problem that we're encountering is that we're limited to two guests. And I would think it made some sense that it would be correlated, the number of guests that we're allowed would be correlated with the number of bedrooms that are available. If we have three bedrooms that, let's say, can a company accommodate two, two people per bedroom, and there's three available bedrooms, why we would not be allowed to have six guests in our home while we're there. You know, it would be nice to have a lock on our bedroom door. I think that would be the only exception to understand, you know, the, the lock rules, which we understand, but it would be nice to have one in our bedroom. But the big thing is really, I would think it made some sense and it would not, uh, be problematic because it wouldn't make a commercial business viable, the bad players viable, if we're there. And, uh, you know, the number of renters is, is related to the number of bedrooms. If we had that, then we could continue our Airbnb business. We wouldn't have to get sprinklers. We wouldn't have to change egress. It would be as if there were guests, that were family members, which by the way, we have a large extended family and, you know, when we don't rent it out to a few guests, then we have family members stay there. And if we rented it out long-term, uh, then we couldn't live there. Our family members could not come. We would basically have to rent out the whole space and, and we would lose our place where we've lived for over 30 years. So really, in summary, we believe in regulation. We believe most of what's being proposed makes a lot of sense. All we're asking is that someone consider greater than two, preferably something correlated to the number of available bedrooms while we're there. I hope you heard me. And that's, that's really our biggest, uh, our biggest hurdle. And we are, we're good players. We're not abusing this. We're paying our taxes. And we really want to continue this. I think it's good for New York City. And it's very helpful for us. Thank you, Mr. Klausner.
Thank you. I, I did hear you and I'm glad that we, we did get to hear, we did get the chance to hear you after the technical difficulties earlier. Scott Kraus was on the list to speak and I've noticed, came back in. I'm going to, I'm going to, I requested Scott to unmute and provide his comment. Scott?
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, great. Thank you. Glad you can make it.
Thank you for, uh, calling, uh, calling back out to me. I had to step away for a few work meetings. Yeah, so I, just a little bit of my story. So we live in a two-family home, which we have been living in since 2016. We've rented, been renting out one of the units, um, as an Airbnb since that time. If this proposed rule were to be enacted, unfortunately, I would need to, you know, sell my home and leave New York as living here as a homeowner would no longer be affordable for me. I live here with my, my wife, infant son, and 83-year-old mother-in-law. Both my wife and mother-in-law are lifelong New Yorkers who, you know, would be sad to leave the city. We have hosted, you know, several hundred groups of families and travelers, which have included both locals as well as tourists. And these folks consistently spend money at local restaurants, cafes, shops, and other facilities. And our experience as responsible hosts, we've been very strict with not allowing parties or the kinds of groups that would create any kind of local nuisance or disturbance or anything along those lines. So again, you know, I am renting my own home where I reside to families and small groups of guests. I do not have this four-plus unit property where I'm not present to actively monitor the types of people renting it out. And as a responsible taxpayer, I'm more than happy to pay my fair share. I find it unfortunate that the city, um, could potentially tell me that I can't rent out my home in a reasonable fashion to best support my family. And again, if, if this lies past, I unfortunately would have to, you know, sell my property and take the capital and associate the tax revenue to a more, a more business-friendly city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm glad that you got to come back and, and share your perspective. It looks like Elan and Rabinevich and KL have their hands raised. I know both have provided comments, but in the absence of anyone else with their hand raised, I'm going to lower Elan Rabinevich's hand. I'm sorry, I'm going to request Elan Rubinevich to unmute himself, then I'll lower his hand.
Thank you. And I, you know, I know this is, we're probably five, what are we, almost five hours into this hearing or so. So I realize it's a lot of time invested on your part and by everybody else here, but, um, you know, this hearing was held during, you know, people's working hours, as KL and others have mentioned earlier. I believe it was supposed to run until, I believe you said it's 5:00 PM or 6:00 PM at the start. So keep in mind, people may not have been able to come here up until now and they may be relying on the fact that you said you'd be open until 5:00 or 6:00. So closing early based on lack of questions right now seems inappropriate at best. You know, the other way you could use the remaining two hours, it seems like you either disagree or, or don't, or, or believe that many of us have misunderstood or misinterpreted the laws as it's written. And so you could host a Q and A for the next two, three hours, or you could let us, you know, let us know which parts of this we are misunderstanding if you don't want to do it as a Q and A. But there's an opportunity here for you to educate hundreds some odd people that are interested in this matter. And instead, you're keeping fairly silent about it. So, um, again, please keep the hearing open to the hours that you approved. I encourage you to fix your website, which has a broken link to this WebEx, as well as an incorrect fax line, which just rings and doesn't, you know, doesn't respond. You acknowledge that to email by me, but haven't fixed the website yet. You know, make sure that people actually get a chance to, to engage here and, you know, and then please take a moment to respond, not just update the rules and notify of us, notify of those new rules later, like engage in a real conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will leave the hearing open until 5:00 for new folks to provide comments and I will monitor it. I may, I may pause the recording while we do that if there's a time where there's very little to speak of. I, I've seen requests for a Q and A. I, I think that going into a Q and A, having that build this as such, this is a regulatory hearing being conducted according to the City Administrative Procedure Act. It's not intended for a Q and A, but my takeaway is that there is a need for Q and As with hosts. And I'm happy to, um, figure out ways to do those, especially once we have the portal open. So hosts can be well aware. I mean, we will be looking to put in additional content on the website as we get closer to the launch that will explain how to use the platform. Shannon Alvin. Requested an unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, uh, thank you. I tried to join earlier and without success, so. I, I am an owner in Brooklyn of a two-family. We Airbnb out, um, harsh, you know, half of our, our home. It's, it's not a unit that would ever be part of a permanent renter. We, I, we live in the city without family close by. I rely on my parents coming up for months at a time to stay to help us with our three children. And in the, in the, in the off times, we Airbnb it out to other families, grandparents here, helping take care of newborn babies. We have no hotels close by. This is, it, it's very confusing. The city has been so, so, there's no transparency at all into Airbnb, the rules. I have spent hours, hours researching to make sure I could be compliant and legal and do everything that I can to be absolutely 100% safe, the same way that I make my decisions in protecting my own family. Fire codes, fire everything. And it's very upsetting that I, I can't even, I read through all, all these rules and I don't even understand. I don't understand you're moving forward, if, if things move forward with these new, new, um, post-registration rules, which I 100% agree, there needs to be some regulations, registration, but it, I don't understand who will qualify. If I am in a, in a, in a two-family home, I, I am, am I supposed to change my zoning, my C of O to a transient? Therefore, then I'm, I'm subjected to the fire code. I have to have sprinklers installed. Who will be able to do this? It's, it's, it can be $100,000 to install a sprinkler system. Who in the end will qualify to register as a host? If, if, if we, the small people who are just trying to get by, and the most, I think New York City was just listed, tied with Singapore as the most expensive city in the world to live. How are we supposed to do it? And I agree, I understand this might, might not be the platform right now for a Q and A, but there is definitely a need for it. You guys need to be more transparent and helpful to your taxpayers and people of New York City. Thank you.
Thank you. I see KL's hand up. I, I believe KL, you've provided a comment, but. And I see KL's hand up. I I believe KL, you've provided a comment, but uh, with no one else in line, I will requesting you unmute.
I did already provide a comment. I just wanted to follow up on Kir Yakko's point, where he mentioned that some of us have health issues and staying in hotels compromises our health, and some inspectors also are extremely overzealous and on power trips. He made a great point, and I just want to offer up a little bit more personal information. Before Linda Rosenthal comes at me again and states that I'm being hyperbolic. Christian Kloster and Linda Rosenthal, did you know that one of the employees of the Office of Special Enforcement leaves comments on my social media? So they show up to my family's house three times, clearly following me in person. And they also follow me online, and I'm not a famous person, so you can't make the claim that he just happened to encounter my profile organically. Christian Klosters, that is an employee in your department. Can you please communicate to him some internet safety tips? Because his comments on other individuals' pages are publicly available and man, the misogyny is out in the open. Hosts, here's the process that happens, and this is what happened to me. Inspectors will show up to your house in groups and request entry. You can deny. They will repeatedly come, and if you continue to deny, they apply for a warrant to inspect your home. If any of them threaten you, like happened to me, you may opt to do what I did and submit a complaint to the CCRB. They forward that complaint to the OSCE, and you never hear back. No investigation into three men threatening a young woman, only investigations into Airbnbs. In my case, it was not Christian Kloster. It was Stephanie Klein, who I do not believe is here today, who signed off on the affidavit, used in an application for a warrant to inspect my family's home. Although the standard of proof for probable cause is much less strict for administrative warrants than it is for criminal ones, you still need some probable cause. Those warrant applications are open data. I read many of them, hundreds of pages of reading. Some of these made complete sense. They saw way more mailboxes than there were units in the building of that sort. That screams illegal conversion. I felt pretty safe. They didn't see that at my house. They didn't see a lockbox or even a keyless entry system. They know a big corporation doesn't own the property. They didn't even see inside because both inspection attempts coincidentally involved me being outside. So when the OSCE eventually did come, bringing seven to eight officers to inspect a modest home, they proceeded to disconnect the house security camera, as if that was covered in the warrant terms, which it was not. They also inspected the shed. They left the shed door open, which caused animals to come in, which I unfortunately found too late, and my brother had to remove them single-handedly, exposing himself to rabies and other illnesses. So it's not just Kir Yakko's wife, who is having her health compromised if she is forced to stay in a hotel. Now, I could not for the life of me figure out what the probable cause was. I mean, I know my family lists our house on Airbnb intermittently, but the Office of Special Enforcement arrived at the house twice to attend an inspection. Both times saw me, no guests. So I read your department's application, and that's when I had to make time to be here today. Even if it takes all day and I have to take time off work. Since Stephanie Klein just signs off on affidavits written by your team, my question, Mr. Kloster, is can we request that these inspectors wear recording devices of some kind, just like NYPD, since they're very clearly prone to not only lying, but deliberately omitting key facts? Ricky Chung's affidavit stated that he swears he is telling the truth under penalty of perjury, and that I shouted expletives at him. I'm not kidding you. We have printed and will frame his affidavit because we want to know what expletives I used. Everyone who knows me knows I don't curse. Everyone. Is Ricky Chung in the audience? Can he elaborate for me what expletives I was using? And to Shar Ahmed, another inspector that works for the Office of Special Enforcement. His affidavit is the one most full of lies. I can't go into every single one here for the sake of time, but he stated that I told him that I have guests over. You know what's crazy about this lie? It's that it's so easy to disprove. Aside from it being recorded, I was outside watering my plants when they came banging on the door. Why use the doorbell when you can practically shatter the glass? They even stated I was outside in their affidavit. So I had guests over and I was outside? That's a little weird. So these were definitely not personal guests, because that's pretty strange behavior. If your friends come over and you leave them indoors while you stay outside. But say they were paying guests, since Mr. Ahmed stated that he regularly checked my listings on Airbnb. And man, I wish someone regularly checked in on my Asian-American friends when the Asian-American violence was skyrocketing, but that's just what I would put resources towards. Didn't he see that the check-in time was for two PM? Two PM, and they came early in the morning. The truth was, I had zero guests over. He just lied because he could lie. It's the word of three men versus me. So the warrant was approved. So that's the only question I have. I know that this is not designed as a Q and A. I think we do need recording devices. I'm very concerned for everyone here who spoke. This department may continue unethically applying for warrants, including lies of omission and just outright lies applications, and Mr. Kloster and Ms. Klein are going to sign off. So let's have this law. Let's have everyone register. Just add recording devices to your overzealous inspectors, so they don't lie. Because Helen and Amy said they will lose their homes if they lose their incomes. But I will lose my home if the fines we were issued are held up in court. We can't pay thousands of dollars for um, inspections based on unethical warrants. And I just want to conclude now. I'm, um, the fact that Amy, Helen, Maria, I, and many others have to sit here and beg a mayoral agency to let us keep our housing is embarrassing. The fact that I have to ask a mayoral agency to get their staff to leave a young woman alone on social media is embarrassing. The fact that we have to explain simple statistics to adults in power, it's embarrassing. That's all.
Thank you. Um, KL, I've sent you my email. I very much like to see the comments posted on your social media. And I will look into that. Michael Allen, Michael, you had your hand up? And you're off mute? Uh, Michael Allen, I'm not sure if you stepped away. Hi, you're more than welcome. You're off mute. Hi, free to give a comment.
Hi, I actually have some questions I want included.
Go ahead.
First of all, from when I was looking at the regulations, seeing what may have to be submitted for a short-term rental, I'm not sure, is that for private room? That's not being transmitted, the information? Or do I have to register for private room host? Or is it only for entire room host? What, how are they verifying the information being submitted? What oversight are on these inspectors? Listening to KL, that was hellacious to listen to. And to be honest, as a long-term New Yorker, it rings true for the overzealousness of our police force on occasion. No matter where they may be located. Um, a long time, I was a, I'm a native New Yorker. Let me take that back. Born and raised here. Native New Yorker. The rules, as I was reading, are not easy to follow. We do not, there's no, you're asking from transparency from Airbnb, but there's not as much transparency on the city's side. So what? Who does supervise these inspectors? What are their standards? What penalties do they have if they lie? Where do we find out that information?
Uh, if if folks are concerned about the potential proprieties of OSCE staff, they can send concerns to osce@cityhall.nyc.gov.
So they should, there are written regulations they must follow. If they violate, they can be penalized for. That's what I'm asking.
There are a number of complaint processes. So if you, if you've had an encounter with an OSCE staff person, and you think they did something wrong, we're happy to look into it or make you aware of what other options there are.
But it sounds like they're not followed up on.
I, I'm, I'm not gonna comment.
Just like most complaints in the city are not, blunt.
I, I'm, I'm certainly not going to comment on a complaint or the investigation or the outcomes or any kind of a personal matter.
Well, that's what I'm asking. It's, it feels like the um, oneness for transparency, which I'm all for, I understand that, is being put on the Airbnb host, but we're dealing with bureaucracy that's opaque.
Right. I I understand your concern. Your initial question about private home versus entire home, the law applies to all short-term rentals. Entire home, short-term rentals are illegal. You, you have to be hosting them. You can have up to two guests, and you have to maintain a common household with those guests.
But they both have to, that's my question.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want to know. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
No, no problem. Okay, Michael Allen has raised his hand. Give me one second to find you again in the list. Uh, Michael, you should be unmuted. Michael, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what's happening. Uh, Michael, you sit in the chat. You're on the phone. Can you put which phone number? For me to unmute? Michael, you appear to be unmuted on our end. Michael, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what's happening. You're not muted on our end. There are two people with hands raised. I I am going to keep the hearing open till five. For anyone who hasn't spoken to provide comments, um, I I will, for the two folks that have their hands raised, since I'm just saying this, I will unmute you in turn, Maria Rabbinovich and Estein. Um, and then after that, if we've already had the comment, I'm going to leave it off until somebody who has not had the chance to provide a comment can speak, and we'll leave this open until five. Hurry, I've requested an unmute.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you so much for giving, giving me the opportunity to speak again. I wanna, I, I appreciate what KL, uh, KL told us. It's a very serious concern that I have on my end. Uh, the idea of me having people perusing around my house. And I'm assuming from what she said, intrusing around my house, and even worse, harassing me thereafter. It's a serious concern. It's a serious concern as a, as a New Yorker. It's a serious concern at any other level as a citizen. I'm entitled to some type of privacy, and while I understand that these inspections need to happen, the thought of somebody disconnecting, uh, disconnecting cameras in my own home and telling me in my own home how to giving them access to my, my own home without any kind of security. It's concerning. It's, as a woman, it's very frightening, the situation that she described. You mentioned that there is a procedure uh, to file complaints. I would love to see who enforces this, who, who takes care of this procedure. Is the same uh, it is the same entity providing the inspectors and at the same time evaluating any kind of concerns and complaints that, that the citizens and the residents provide. If KL were to file a complaint, were, were somebody in the same regulatory, regulatory entity will be revising this. There it cannot, it, it makes no sense that this is it. It has to be it, it's third-party entity evaluating what they are doing drawn and actually providing some kind of service and protection to people like KL and like any of us. So I don't know what, what kind of procedure it is, because procedure is kind of a very vague and ambiguous term. I would like to know some, something that is explicitly stated, and where if we are going to have to allow these people in Sarah Holmes, somebody that is a third-party unrelated to the inspectors need to be able to evaluate their behavior and take any preventive measures for this. and take any preventive measures for this not to happen to us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Estein?
Yeah, to go off of the, you know, talk about transparency. Mr. Cluster, I know this is not a Q and A, but like, this is a really important question because it states that this law is going into effect into, in January. But then in May, there's enforcement. Can you like, please at least like, give some clarity to that? I know that, you know, we're still discussing the rules and everything here. But as it stated right now, us as hosts, we have to make plans for the people that were planning to stay in our homes. And I want to be able to abide by the rules and regulations as set forth by the city. But I, I need some, some sort of clarity on, is this a thing where if I don't register until May, you know, I, I might get fines or violations? Can you, can you talk a little bit about that January, May date? And how it applies to, you know, the, this law?
The, January is the date which hosts must begin registering and the fines don't start until May. That gives hosts four months to register. You, what is currently illegal will remain what is illegal. If you are following the law and hosting no more than two people in the unit you live in and maintaining a common household with them, there's no reason that you can't, you would have to cancel anything. If you are hosting more than two people, if you're hosting a unit that you don't live in, if you're not maintaining a common household, those acts would be illegal and subject to enforcement. The, and then once the, um, and then in May 9th is when the fines start. By then, the platforms will be required to verify whether a host is registered or not and they'll be prohibited from processing any transactions for, for any unregistered activity.
Got it. Okay.
And, and please, you know, continue to watch our website. We'll continue to provide additional information as I stated before. And we'll find ways to, um, you know, to have sessions like the kind that hosts seem to want to have that are more Q and A focused and guidance focused.
That would, that would be really helpful. We have not heard anything from, on Airbnb's end. So that's why like, you know, this is the first meeting where actually we're getting some sort of clarity. You know, the, from, from, from a government official. Because Airbnb has not said anything to us. So my assumption is that they'll be in touch with us about this as well.
Yeah, and I encourage, again, I encourage folks in the rules, there is the section that lists the specific code sections. I strongly encourage everybody to review those sections and look at the units that you live in, certificate of occupancy, and determine, determine what, um, what kind of occupancy it is. You can check the building code, section 310, to see what that occupancy allows. I put them in before. And the code sections are in the rules.
Thank you very much.
For the record, I'm going to pause my video. And we'll be watching to see if folks arrive to provide comments. I'm going to continue to keep the hearing open. I'm going to pause the recording to reduce the file size. I will restart it if there are additional comments to be heard. Okay, the time is 3:45. I've resumed the recording. We have someone with their hand up, MMR. I'm requesting sending a request unmute. I'm requesting sending a request unmute.
Yes, thanks, Christian. Yes, thanks, Christian. I have a question. I have a question. There's a fair amount of I was on for most of the day, took a break and just came back. There's a fair amount of I was on for most of the day, took a break and just came back. There's a lot of misinformation, miscommunication about what the law is and isn't. There's a lot of misinformation, miscommunication about what the law is and isn't. Even one of the representatives that was on earlier today said it didn't apply to three, Even one of the representatives that was on earlier today said it didn't apply to three, two and three family homes. two and three family homes. The notes are very contradictory. The notes are very contradictory. You know, in one case it says you can rent if you live in the home for less than 30 days. You know, in one case it says you can rent if you live in the home for less than 30 days, but the first part of it says you can't rent at all for less than 30 days. But the first part of it says you can't rent at all for less than 30 days. If you even if you own and live in the property. If you even if you own and live in the property. Is there an opportunity for somebody from the O S E to do a Q and A? Is there an opportunity for somebody from the O S E to do a Q and A? So we can all get the same information at the same time. So we can all get the same information at the same time? Because I think a lot of what you heard, what I heard today was just confusion about what Because I think a lot of what you heard, what I heard today was just confusion about what the law is and what it isn't. the law is and what it isn't.
Yeah, we did say earlier, I think, you know, the questions and the requests for Yeah, we did say earlier, I think, you know, the questions and the requests for Q and A have been heard. Q and A have been heard. I'm reluctant to try to merge that kind of event with regulatory rulemaking hearing. I'm reluctant to try to merge that kind of event with regulatory rulemaking hearing. This has a very specific purpose and it wasn't advertised as a Q and A. This has a very specific purpose and it wasn't advertised as a Q and A. So I'd rather try to follow up. So I'd rather try to follow up. I'm encouraged folks in the hearing to monitor our website for ongoing updates and to review I'm encouraged folks in the hearing to monitor our website for ongoing updates and to review the sections of law in the proposed rules that people will be required to acknowledge the sections of law in the proposed rules that people will be required to acknowledge that they've read and understand. that they've read and understand.
So what's that? So what's that? Is that yes to a Q and A or all your questions will be answered on the website? Is that yes to a Q and A or all your questions will be answered on the website? That's. That's.
We will have a Q and A. We will have a Q and A. There is there are F A Qs on the site. There is there are F A Qs on the site. We'll be updating those as well, based on the questions asked during the hearing. We'll be updating those as well, based on the questions asked during the hearing. And the specific statutes that we apply in the work are cited in the rules. And the specific statutes that we apply in the work are cited in the rules. And so we've encouraged folks to live there at the beginning of the hearing. And so we've encouraged folks to live there at the beginning of the hearing. I made opening comments and described the use of the law under the Building, Construction, I made opening comments and described the use of the law under the Building, Construction, Housing Maintenance Code and the Multiple Dwelling Law as requiring permanent occupancy Housing Maintenance Code and the multiple dwelling law as requiring permanent occupancy by a family of 30 days or more, that the definition of family can include up to two by a family of 30 days or more, that the definition of family can include up to two roomers, boarders or lodgers, and that that's what short term renters are considered. roomers, boarders or lodgers, and that that's what short term renters are considered. And that therefore, short term rentals in either one family home, two family home, And that therefore, short term rentals in either one family home, two family home, multiple dwelling, anything that's not specifically authorized for transient are only allowed multiple dwelling, anything that's not specifically authorized for transient are only allowed when the host is staying with the guests. when the host is staying with the guests. There's not more than two guests and the guests have unobstructed access to the unit. There's not more than two guests and the guests have unobstructed access to the unit. You know, these are the rules that we've stated on our on our website for some time. You know, these are the rules that we've stated on our on our website for some time. We know that them being in different sections of the law makes it more challenging. We know that them being in different sections of the law makes it more challenging. That's why it's been boiled down to simple statements that have been on our website now That's why it's been boiled down to simple statements that have been on our website now for several years and why, you know, we put in the rules, the specific provisions that for several years and why, you know, we put in the rules, the specific provisions that folks would have to agree to. folks would have to agree to. Would you would you like to make a comment or share any share your perspectives that Would you would you like to make a comment or share any share your perspectives that you're off mute on the on the rules? you're off mute on the on the rules?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I mean, I think I could just re restate what everyone said. Yes, I mean, I think I could just re restate what everyone said. I think that it's a really blunt type of law that that is applying the same standard I think that it's a really blunt type of law that that is applying the same standard to every scenario when there's so much nuance and how short term rentals are used, you to every scenario when there's so much nuance and how short term rentals are used, you know, as a, you know, I totally hear and understand the value of a registration process, know, as a, you know, I totally hear and understand the value of a registration process, not completely against that, but the application of the rules to different units, whether not completely against that, but the application of the rules to different units, whether it's a 40, 100 unit, multi dwelling unit versus a one to two family unit. it's a 40, 100 unit, multi dwelling unit versus a one to two family unit. I think that that, yeah, I'd like to hear my concern to be heard in terms of that being I think that that, yeah, I'd like to hear my concern to be heard in terms of that being opportunity for nuance to be applied and would strongly encourage our representatives opportunity for nuance to be applied and would strongly encourage our representatives to look at those scenarios and apply the law or create laws that are appropriate for to look at those scenarios and apply the law or create laws that are appropriate for those different scenarios, because right now having everybody under the same set of laws those different scenarios, because right now having everybody under the same set of laws with the same type of application is not, you know, it's not appropriate and it's going with the same type of application is not, you know, it's not appropriate and it's going to hurt, you know, individuals, middle class people who are who are using it for a different to hurt, you know, individuals, middle class people who are who are using it for a different purpose. purpose. We're not big investors who are coming in to take, you know, huge swaths of inventory We're not big investors who are coming in to take, you know, huge swaths of inventory off the market. off the market. We are being hurt in significant ways, particularly in Brooklyn by these high rise apartments. We are being hurt in significant ways, particularly in Brooklyn by these high rise apartments. Like somebody made the point earlier, $3,000 is a minimum for one bedroom in some of these Like somebody made the point earlier, $3,000 is a minimum for one bedroom in some of these high rises. high rises. I've seen it as high as 5,000. I've seen it as high as 5,000. There are two, two bedroom units that are $10,000, $15,000 a month in downtown Brooklyn. There are two, two bedroom units that are $10,000, $15,000 a month in downtown Brooklyn. You know, those are the things that are driving rents up. You know, those are the things that are driving rents up. It's not, you know, single two, two and three family homes with single units. It's not, you know, single two, two and three family homes with single units. So that's my request. So that's my request. The law needs can be applied. The law needs can be applied. The registration is not as much of an issue as much as having that law applied the same The registration is not as much of an issue as much as having that law applied the same across all the different scenarios for short term rentals. across all the different scenarios for short term rentals. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. The time is 3:56. I'm again going to pause the recording. I'll continue to monitor for additional people who raised their hand who have not yet provided a comment. Okay, I'm resuming the recording at 4:35 PM. A member, an audience member raised that the link to the hearing on the New York City Rules site was not connecting. I that site is not operated by the Office of Special Enforcement. I flagged the concern to the Mayor's Office of Operations and they reported to me that the link has been restored. I want to thank the person who raised this as an issue so that it could get corrected. I will now again pause the recording at 4:36 and continue to keep the hearing open until 5:00 PM for anybody who has not yet commented to provide comments. I'm resuming the recording at 4:37 PM. We see a hand up from Denise Smith Allen. Denise, thank you for coming back. We called on you earlier. I'm glad that you could be available to make your comment. I'm requesting you to unmute now.
Well, thank you very much, Christian. I had to go to for dental appointments. You had a long list of people ahead of me.
I'm sorry to hear that.
I am making a quick comment about a lot that has been covered already. As you said, my name is Denise Smith Allen. My brother and I own our family home in Queens by LaGuardia Airport. The property taxes to our home continue to go up. I'm a senior citizen and rely on Social Security and pension as my primary source of financial support. We have been a part of the Airbnb platform for almost three years. The income generated from our short term rental arrangement helps defray our our property cost. Many guests go to neighborhood stores, attend ballgames and shows and go sightseeing, which is a boon to the New York City economy. After reading over the proposed laws governing short term rentals, I am saddened and outraged that such measures are being considered that would erode revenue to Airbnb owners. I understand that many that maybe some have taken advantage of policies and that were set forth on rentals or short term rentals, but to institute such restrictions and rules and regulations, especially about after many of us are still recovering from the effects of the pandemic does a disservice to all of us. My brother and I ask that you reconsider or at least make modifications to address your concerns to the individuals involved. Please note that I have also submitted a written statement to Airbnb regarding my concerns about what is going on. And I'm also concerned that Airbnb is being singled out while there are other platforms out here that we don't hear a peep about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. And if you would like the statement that you sent to Airbnb to be considered as part of the administrative record, please email it to oserules@NYC, I'm sorry, oserules@cityhall.nyc.gov.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With no additional hands up, we will pause the recording. The time is 4:40. I'm resuming the recording. This is 4:46. I'm delighted that Jean or Jean will hear what it is has come back. I'm requesting you to unmute. Glad that you could make it back to join us and provide a comment.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm being Airbnb for the past five years and I'm a host. I love hosting. I love to serve people all over the world and even in local neighborhoods and communities. It supports and helped me with my finances, paying my mortgage. I own a two family house and everyone that comes to my dwelling, they love it, they feel at home, even though they left their home. I got kitchen, backyard, patio space where they feel at ease, comfortable, and they enjoy their guests and family. It's sad to know that some people don't do the right thing and that causes problem. Yes, I registered and of course I obeyed the rules and the law. Each one should have a fair share. Let live, live and let live. While like you go to Brooklyn downtown, you see maximum building high rise where you could hardly look up. They are the one who are making the money and don't report in to the city. It's like working under the table. And taking away bread from our mouth, we're just going to be another statistics in the city. Big city, it it we bring in, invest in boosting the economy, transportation, tourism, and of course, the guests love to come because they get to be in their own space, their own environment, and they feel at home. And of course, when they look, they said, gee, they look for my place because I treat them as how I would like someone to treat me wherever I go. So please reconsider and give and let live and give someone a chance. This is the only way I survive in paying my mortgage than to be a homeless on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad that you made it back to provide us your comment.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
You as well. Okay, the time is 4:49. I'm going to pause the recording. The time is 4:50. I'm resuming the recording. There's another hand up from Juan. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I've been at the meeting, I think, almost since the beginning of the meeting. And I wanted to take the opportunity to share a little bit of the sentiment that I have with the fellow hosts that are here and regarding this new local law 18. I have a lot of, a lot of emotions going through that I don't want to really verbalize. I am better at writing my thoughts, but I've been an Airbnb host for a long time. I've been an Airbnb host since 2014 and it all started at our house that me and my mom have. And I helped my mom out with this Airbnb hosting. And we own our house, we're co owners, me and my mom. And when we bought it, we had the vision to be able to pay off our house. I lost my job and this was the only opportunity for me to help her out. our house. I lost my job, and this was the only opportunity for me to help her out in making sure that these extra rooms that we had were both occupied by responsible guests. And we saw this platform, and I became a host, and I am a 20-time-plus super host. I am the best, just like the people in here are the best, because the bad actors are guaranteed are not here. These are the people that are hosting in New York. These are the best of the best. These people take care of their properties, they take care of their homes, they share the intimate spaces with these guests so that New York can be the city that it is. I hear people from Brooklyn coming in here. I have people from all over the New York City to talk. I am personally from the Bronx, from an area that perhaps the normal tourist would never get to see if this was not possible. I share my neighborhood, I share the local restaurants, I share the local experience of New York City. I've opened the eyes of thousands of guests to what New York City can be, what the Bronx can be, what New York can offer, you know, and very different than some of the other people here that have not felt the brute of this new law. I have also been a target of the law as early as it can possibly be. This is scheduled to happen in January, and I'm feeling the effects of it now. Just like KL, which spoke earlier, I was a person that was already targeted by the law. It already, it already happened to me. This is my reality, my day-to-day today. I actually missed a meeting with the lawyer. I postponed it because I have to now fight these outrageous violations, accusations within my own home in order to, you know, be able to speak and be able to talk to you guys about this. And I share the sentiment of every host that has been here, that has been in this position, that understands what Airbnb has provided for them, and what it continues to do for people that want to visit our city, and that want to visit our city on a short-term basis, because they're not coming here for 30 days. Nobody from Japan is coming here for 30 days and staying in a hotel for 30 days, you know? They're coming to our homes because it meets their needs, you know? So, we've got to look at two other things. It's going to affect the people that are hosting, and it's also going to affect tourism in New York, because once it becomes hard for somebody to come in here, to pay the outrageous prices that could sometimes happen in hotels, or hotels might not accommodate to their needs, you know? I heard people talk about people traveling with idiocy things, you know, they have their dogs, and they need their, people that need kitchens, or people that, you know, honestly are here to support local businesses. You know, these people are all going to be affected. Tourism will be affected. Our hosts will be affected. What has happened to me is that I may take my two rooms off, and they're not going to go back into the marketplace. These two rooms are just going to go back to my house, and they're going to be empty there. They're going to be empty in my house for my own family, but I will no longer share with people that are coming here and that need a place to stay, you know? I, I'm a victim of this, I'm a victim of it now. I have some very valid points from a lot of people here, from KL, from Keith, and from all the people that spoke earlier. I've been listening to all the, all the comments from everybody. I've read all the comments, and trust me, there's a lot of reading. I read all the multiple-dwelling law, I read the zoning law, I read the fire code, I read every single thing to try to understand this. But then again, I'm that type of person that will go and try to be in compliance. I shared my address with, with city officials from the beginning because I wanted to be compliant, because I wanted to see what the city was going to come up with. And the city used this information to target me and to make me an example, an early example of this. And now I'm going to have to fight the city on this, and I may win, but in the process, I will lose a lot of money. I will lose the opportunity to continue to pay for my home. I may have to even sell my home because I may not be able to afford it. I may not be able to substantiate the part that this, as little income as it was, even if it was one room, even if it was two rooms, as little as it was, it was supplementing to my overall being able to pay and help my mother out with this. So, I just wanted to put my opinion there. I could not leave today without saying I participated in this, and I voiced my, and expressed my opinion and shared the sentiment of all the fellow hosts, of all the fellow super-hosts out there and good hosts out there, that whose guests are extremely happy and filled with gratitude that they were hosted, that they were brought into their homes. I bring these people into my personal four walls and share my personal things with them. And this is how the city is thinking that we are part of this bad actors. Like I said, and some people said earlier, I'm not opposed to the registration. If it was made in a sensible way, if it was made in a way that homeowners like myself are able to get in compliance or become part of this registry system, or, you know, somehow take place in, in part on all this, but the way that it's being proposed and the way that it's being implemented, it won't even give the opportunity for people to join and for people to be part of this. Most sadly, what's going to happen is most hosts will just retire, and, and it's not going to resolve any of our problems. And that's all I wanted to say today. And I'm thankful, Christian, for you at least hosting this hearing so that people can express this. And even if it doesn't change anything on the part, I'm happy that we were able to hear each other and support each other in this, and know that this is not one-person fight. This is not me against New York. You know, this is all these people here that are voicing their opinions about this. And I am glad I feel comforted and feel emboldened by the fact that there's multiple people going through the same situation that I'm going through and that are fighting this fight, you know? And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ron, and I know you've been on the chat for quite some time. I'm glad that you took the time to raise your hand and show your perspective. It is one minute to five. I see two hands up. We will hear from both comments. Anybody else who has not spoken who raises their hand will be heard, and then we will close the meeting. The next is Alex Young.
Thanks, Christian. There was a speaker, maybe two speakers ago, who was talking about apps that we don't hear a peep from, and so I might as well just name the apps for anyone who stayed with us until this final hour. So, some of the apps that you don't hear a peep from is because they're longer than 30 days, they exclusively focus on longer than 30 days, and they are Blueground, Sonder, Lux, Avantstay, Mint House, Casa, spelled with a K, K-A-S-A, Front Desk, Macomi, Furnish Quarters, Landing, Anyplace, Corporate Habitat, Home State, Vacasa, Corporate Habitat. And there are likely more. When I started tracking these two years ago, there was only a handful, and now you see that there's so many, even I can't keep track, and I'm the main watchdog. So, you know, I don't want to say anything incendiary, but if you really want fairness, you would also have these apps also on a registry, whether it's local law 18 or some other separate registry. You can't just have the small landlords be all corralled into one registry, and then these apps are treated as innocent. And, you know, are they innocent? I don't think so. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Dave S.
Hi, Christian. So, I know, I'm not sure if we can do a little more Q and A, but I'm just curious what the process is going forward from this point. I don't know if there's going to be additional period for commentary or sort of what, what the next steps are. It would be helpful if you could talk for a minute about what we can expect.
Sure. So, the notice for the proposed rules was posted November 4th, and that's visible on the rules website. The, the public hearing, the public comment period ends today. It will end at the close of the hearing. We will review all of the comments to the degree that there are comments we haven't heard or read yet. I know there have been folks posting on the NYC rules. We'll be reading those. We'll be reading the entire, the entire chat that we will preserve and make part of the record. And then we will move on to considering what if any changes are appropriate. We will then propose final rules. If folks, folks should keep an eye on our registration law website. The final rules will also be published in the New York City Rules website and the city record. And the point that they are published, then they will go into effect 30 days later. Seeing no further hands up, and it being after 5:00 PM, I am going to conclude this hearing. I, I know a lot of folks have been here all day. I appreciate your attention, your attention, your attendance, and for those of you who spoke, your participation. I'm glad that we heard robust conversation from all sides, and not just two perspectives, but many, many perspectives. And all of your comments have been heard, have been read, and I will be personally reviewing all of the written comments as well. I can't thank everybody enough for their time and their participation. Thank you very much, and this concludes the hearing.